You are on the record.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, please turn off any of your cell phones or other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. If anyone present is planning on presenting testimony, please sign in at the sign-in sheets and at the back of the room. Anyone who wants an opportunity tonight to speak will have the time to do so. So please step up to the podium when your name, when your turn is called and make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. We request that you please keep your testimony focused on the relevant issues and facts for each application. Please remember these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on issues related to land use applications, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that is hateful in nature and will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement on other people's character. Okay, tonight is, today is Wednesday, the eighteenth day of December. The time is six o'clock, the time set for the public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, thank you. We have no unfinished business, so the first item on our business is I will open the public hearing on application two zero two four zero one two zero nine, Z C D A S P R, London Bridge subdivision. I will ask Michelle, our staff, to give us a report, after which we'll, we'll get testimony from the applicant and then we'll take public testimony from there on. Michelle?
Can you be commissioners? My name is Michaela Owens, Associate Planner with Boisie County Public Services.
I can hear you.
You can hear me okay? Oh, there we go. Now it's on. Perfect. Okay, so tonight I'm going to be presenting two zero two four zero one two zero nine, Z C D A S P R. Before I jump into that presentation, I just wanted to add a couple of documents to the record, the ones that you have in front of you. One is a water permit from Idaho Department of Water Resources. One is the clarification on a groundwater area of concern. And one is a clarification on the road slope, and I will mention those, those in my presentation. I just want to make sure those were added to the record now and you had a second to look at them. So I am presenting London Bridge subdivision. You know what the project number is. It's an application for a zone change from rural residential to rural urban transition with a development agreement. It's an eight lot subdivision and a private road. First, I'll share the project location, then the project scope, some site considerations, and finally, some important comments and conditions relevant to the application. So first, the project is located near the Ada County Canyon County border, east of the intersection of McDermott and West Green Lane. To provide a little bit more of a close-up of the site, it constitutes approximately forty acres in Kuna's impact area, and it's bordered on three sides by the Moora Canal. The property is also located within the Wildland Urban Fire Interbase. The current zoning of the project site is rural residential with rural preservation zoning located to the south. Kuna Future Land Use Map designates this site as agriculture with a minimum size requirement of five acres, which the requested rural urban transition district would accommodate. For the project scope, the applicant has proposed an eight lot subdivision with approximately five acre lots. The subdivision will be accessed via proposed private road, South London Lane, which terminates in a cul-de-sac at the southern portion of the site, which you can see here. The applicant has indicated they will be accessing the site via an existing bridge over the Moora Canal in the northwest corner of the site, which you can see here on this drawing. The proposed London Bridge subdivision is going to constitute eight separate lots that are five acres, but it would need a fifty-foot wide easement for that access point in the northwest corner. For some additional site considerations, just to provide some context for the surrounding area, the proposed subdivision is located southeast of Bridal Ridge subdivision, and it's to the east of Mona subdivision. Bridal Ridge subdivision is a non-farm subdivision with one acre residential lots, and the closest properties to the project site are at five point one three acres and three acres respectively, which you can see here. The Mona subdivision has ten to thirteen acre lots. The proposed London Bridge would therefore provide a middle ground between these two subdivisions in terms of lot size. Staff transmitted the application to relevant agencies and received the following key responses and conditions. Ada County Comprehensive Planning indicated that the project complies with Boise's Comprehensive Plan. Boise-Kuna Irrigation District in the Boise Project clarified that there are no surface irrigation rights available to this project. Central District Health is requiring test holes and an engineering report, which is standard for subdivisions. And the Ada County engineer had a variety of conditions, all of which have been met, except for providing details of the irrigation system to the engineer. Additionally, Kuna Rural Fire District is requiring thirteen feet six inches for the proposed bridge over the entry point. We did receive quite a few public comments on this project, and we received a few letters of opposition that expressed a variety of concerns. The first was that there are some aesthetic concerns with the bridge. I'm going to jump around a little bit. Let me know if you're not able to see this, but this is a rendering of what the covered bridge looks like. At the last hearing, there was some concern that it would be too large. The applicant has clarified that it would be twenty-five feet at the maximum and more like twenty feet and would provide that thirteen foot six inch clearance for emergency vehicles to pass through. The developer also indicated that if this was a sticking point for the project, they would be willing to not build this portion of the project. Back to our public comments. The next area of concern was water availability for irrigation. So as mentioned previously, there are not surface irrigation rights available to this property. The engineer has also limited watering that comes from the well for each property to a half acre per property. So with the surface water rights not being available, the applicant did go and ask Idaho Department of Water Resources to grant them groundwater irrigation rights. They were allowed point seven six cubic feet per second, and they're limited to point oh two cubic feet per second per acre. Additionally, it was clarified that this is not in an area of groundwater concern. IDWR indicated they're unaware of a South Ada County groundwater area of concern, which one of our letters of opposition was concerned with, and that the area of groundwater concern shown on this slide is purple up in the northeast corner, and that a little purple or pink X marks the property that we're discussing. You could, however, require as a condition of approval, that has not currently been added, a water supply adequacy study or an evaluation by an engineer to ensure that the water supply is adequate for the property. Returning to more of the comments to address each of these in turn, there was some concerns about South London Lane, which is the proposed private road. The first is that there was concerns that the slope of the road was going to be too high. So one of the documents that I provided to you clarifies what the applicant is averaging for the slope, which is at eleven point two is the average that they most recently provided to us. It's also what the current slope is at the moment. Kuna Rural Fire went and tried to put their apparatus on this road, and they said that it was successful and that they would approve what the current grade is, which is that eleven point two average. Ideally, and I think the applicant will clarify this further with their testimony, they're hoping to bring that down slightly, but it was shown that Kuna Rural Fire could make the current grade. Engineering also supports the grade exceeding ten percent if the fire department approves it, which they did. They also clarified that there are some longer distances of flat areas that approach the bridge that would indicate that the slope that they're currently suggesting may even be higher than what is actually out there. So there is, however, a potential condition of approval that could be added here, which would be warning signs at the bridge indicating that there is a slope, that bridges sometimes have icier conditions than the rest of the roads, or any other warning signs that you think would be appropriate if you approve this application. There was some concerns that the traffic generated would be too much for the road to handle. ACHD did review this application specifically and provided comments on it to me specifically that the sightlines were very clear for the property. I wanted to provide this Google Maps quick grab showing that this is the curve, and then you can see the entrance, little bit further back, the proposed entrance to the site. So it is located on a curve. However, ACHD said that there were clear sightlines and that the road was rated for the amount of traffic that would be generated by eight rural large lot residential properties. There is concerns about what the speed limit is on the road and that people would be approaching that curve too quickly. I incorrectly stated at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that the speed limit on the road was twenty-five miles per hour. What I was referring to was this recommended speed that you see here, which is the twenty miles per hour as you approach the curves, and that the county road speed is twenty, is fifty-five miles per hour. Returning to our public comments again, I'd say a through line of the comments that we received is that they would prefer that the property is not rezoned and that it stay rural residential with ten acre lots. It was shown that this project, as far as we've heard from other agencies, is appropriate with the rezone and that the amenities that are available would support eight five acre lots. There was concerns that the property has unusable ground because a portion of it is canal. I'll show you, go back here and you can see where the canal is located on three corners of the site. So a portion of that property is unusable ground. It comes from the canal. The precedent that was set by staff is that we include even unusable ground in parcel lot size calculations. Otherwise, we would end up with a lot of non-conforming lots. So that's the precedent that has been set and the one that we're using in reviewing this application. There was also a concern that the ground is too sloped in the area. Wanted to show you what our GIS shows as far as slopes in the area. Where you see little colored polygons, those are areas where the slope exceeds fifteen percent. So the rest of the site is less than fifteen percent for sloped ground. Now that the property has been granted groundwater irrigation rights, there was a request that the property remain prime farm ground. I wanted to show you what area of the site is considered prime farmland. That dark green corner on the southeast border of this property is the only part of the property that is considered prime farmland if irrigated, and that the light green is farmland of statewide importance. And then the rest of it is not usable or viable farmland, and it is currently fallow and not being used for farming activities. There was concern that the environmental evaluation that we received as part of our natural features analysis was not comprehensive enough. We requested an IPAC report, which indicates any sensitive species on the property, and it was not indicated that there were any sensitive species. So there was not further research done into that. It also is cut off from the surrounding open space by three sides here, and it doesn't provide a lot of for wildlife migration because of the canal being located there. The very last concern, and I'd say the one that shows up the most often in our comments, was that this subdivision would be located in close proximity to a dairy. This is the closest dairy that's located to the proposed subdivision. As you can see, it almost shares like property lines. It does share a tiny portion of the property line with this project, so it would be in close proximity. The way that staff has addressed this concern is including right-to-farm language, which is standard for any new subdivisions that are located in Ada County. And there could also be a condition of approval added that it would be mentioned in the CCNRs that are provided for any residents that want to move in, that they are close in proximity to this active dairy. Finally, moving into some key conditions of approval, they would need to receive approval from these agencies as a standard, include that right-to-farm language on the plat face, some small revisions indicating setbacks from the Moora Canal and from the boundaries of the property for utilities, compliance with the fire protection plan, which they did provide, and inclusion of that fire protection plan in their CCNRs, a fifty-foot access easement, as mentioned previously, compliance with the Ada County engineer's comments, which includes a twenty-four-foot wide bridge, thirteen foot six inches of clearance required for the bridge for emergency services. And some of the possible conditions I've mentioned that you could include would be that water adequacy evaluation and signs indicating slope or icy conditions near the bridge, as well as you could provide a reference to the dairy being located in the CCNRs. With that being said, staff finds that the application complies with Ada County code, and I do recommend approval of this application. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval at their November seventh, twenty twenty-four public hearing, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michaela. Is there any questions from the commission? Go ahead.
Just clarifications. Thank you for your presentation, but I guess it, there's no surface irrigation rights. Excuse me. But one of the conditions for approval under the exhibit A is C, it says the Boise-Kuna Irrigation District, Boise Port of Control must approve all approved modifications to exist to get irrigation system. What does that mean?
So Mr. Commissioner Daly, there was at one point discussions with the applicant to talk about them requesting surface irrigation rights from the irrigation district, and so I included that condition in case they were able to get those irrigation rights granted, but they weren't, and they continue to not have surface irrigation rights. So just if there are any changes were made, I wanted them to be able to have a chance to sign off on them.
Okay. Go ahead. And on your map, which is a prime farmland. You said that the, clarify the dark green and the light green again?
So the dark green is what we consider prime farmland if irrigated, and then the light green is what's considered farmland of statewide importance.
Okay, I think you just clarified. So if irrigated, it's prime farmland if irrigated.
Yes.
So if they had the water to it, it would be prime farmland. But at this point, they don't.
Yes, Commissioner Daly, that's correct. That's how we're interpreting it.
And the question regarding the attic waters, because they don't have surface water, Farm Water Resources, again, clarification of my understanding, indicated that there would be water available, they could get water. What then, if there's a condition of approval for adequate water study, what would, what would be the requirements of that study?
So Commissioner Daly, that's a great question. Usually, we leave it to our engineers to review those water adequacy studies, just to make sure that they're appropriate. Our engineer does a really preliminary check to make sure that there's water available, and Idaho Department of Water Resources also indicated that water was available, but it wasn't an in-depth study of this area. So it would need, it would probably be a more in-depth study, but I can't speak to what all of the requirements of that would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, Mikel, I did have a question. These are large lots, are they not?
They are five acre lots.
Five acre lots. And they have no surface water, right? So what that would mean is they would need more water if they intended to do any irrigation on the property, would have to come from a, from a well, correct?
So they were granted some groundwater irrigation rights, but it was at the limit that was set here. And I can't necessarily speak to whether this would be enough water to perform any in-depth or high level of farming on the property. It's not my area of expertise. But with five acre lots, we usually have the understanding that it would be more hobby farming or backyard gardening instead of in-depth production on a farm level.
That'd be a large backyard, would it not?
For me, it would be.
Okay, any other questions from, from the commission? All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, is the applicant here? Oh, Mr. Lakey.
Mr. Chairman.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Commissioners, before we start for the record, my name is Todd Lakey with Lakey-Villegas Law, address one forty-one East Carlton Avenue, Meridian eight three six four two. Looks like Michaela has the slides up. I'll start by thanking Ms. Owens for her work on this case, for analyzing the comp plan and zoning ordinance, for her recent comments addressing and refuting some of the concerns that were raised. We appreciate her analysis and recommendation of approval, and also acknowledge the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioners, I'll just hit some of the high points, and then I'll go into a little more detail as I get into my presentation. But first and foremost, this property is located in the Kuna impact area. It's their comprehensive plan that governs, as provided in the Ada County ordinance, and their comprehensive plan provides for five acre lots in this location. This property is, was also shown as up against the BLM ground, so it essentially provides that transition between public land and the more dense city development that will be coming out to this area as a result of the impact area. The R U T zone is exactly for that purpose, and it also provides for five acre lots. Commissioners, this is a very small project, eight lots, very low impact, minimal impact as acknowledged by ACHD and others in the analysis. And this will be a nice quality development with custom homes. That's the type of projects that Mr. Langston does. Next slide, if you would, Michaela. So there was a lot of thought put into this application, commissioners. It's the right location. It is in the impact area. These are five acre lots that fit Kuna's comprehensive plan. As was noted, primarily, this is not prime farm ground. There aren't surface irrigation water rights. There's not agricultural history that we're taking things out of production, as in elsewhere in the area. The additional subsurface water rights will enhance that small-scale agriculture that can occur on a five acre lot. But we're not taking ag ground out of production. And that helps provide that balance to maintaining or trying to preserve some of the prime ag ground that's still in that area. There is a demand for rural acreages, and from a property rights perspective, you know that not everyone wants to live on city lots. And there's a demand for these lots. If you allow these types of lots on ground that hasn't been used for agriculture, you reduce the pressure to develop the other prime agricultural land that still remains in the impact area. So this provides that good land use balance. Next slide, Michaela. This is a quality company, as I said, a quality project, a very simple design. Won't spend much time there. Next slide. So this is a higher aerial view over the parcel looking north. You can see some of the city in the distance. It's about a mile and a half away as I looked at it on Google. You can see that there's also certainly existing ag in the area. And those that will be coming out here will be driving through that portion of ag as they get to the property, will be very aware of that character of the area. And then as staff mentioned, right-to-farm will be included in the CCNRs and acknowledgements for the purchasers of this property. There are also existing residential estate-type acreage lots in this area. I'll talk about that in a moment. Next slide. So this is a view of the Moora Canal as you look north to the subdivision immediately adjacent to our north. Next slide. Just a little bit on the bridge. Commissioners, this was our plan as an amenity for the project. As you can look at it, it's a, it's a country-style bridge. This is part of the heritage in our country, is old covered bridges. It fits that rural character. We will design it such that it meets the fire district requirements. We'll be widening and improving that existing bridge across the Moora Canal. The fire district will review that design and approve it before it's completed. As staff said, we're, we're willing to give that up, but we think it's an amenity to the project and will enhance the, the area. Next slide. So these are examples of some of the custom homes that Mr. Langston does in his projects. This is the keep. You may have heard of that subdivision. It's actually a Meridian subdivision, larger city-type lots. But the proposed CCNRs that are in that package were kind of a base from the keep subdivision. There's still some old remnants of the keep language in there, but minimum square footage for the homes is three thousand square feet. Next slide. So some of the key components, commissioners, as far as character of the area, again, this is in the Kuna impact area. This is the last private parcel between the private parcels that may be developed coming from the city and the public lands. So this is the parcel that you want for that rural urban transition, to help provide that transition to the undeveloped public land as the more dense development comes this direction. There are agricultural operations in the area, certainly, but Kuna's comprehensive plan designates the property as agriculture. But in doing so, in their comp plan, they also define agriculture. It's not what anybody wants it to be, it's how they define it in their designation. And their designation supports small-scale and large-scale agriculture. And five acre lots are allowed and looked at as small-scale agriculture. You can have nice gardens, you can have some animals on the property that fit within that rural character of the area that are more that small-scale agriculture. As I said, it is comparable to other residential estate lots in the area. If you slide, change slides again, Michaela. So these are some of the homes that exist in the area. So these are some of the homes that exist in the area. There's certainly a spectrum of home types in the area, but I took pictures of the ones that are more comparable, that are of that nicer, high-quality. And ours will be similar. Next slide. So commissioners, the blue star is our subject property. I want to talk about some of the other residential development in there. You can see that there is some pattern of dividing properties into residential estates in the area. There are one acre lots, as was noted, adjacent to the north. That's the Bridle Ridge, the old non-farm subdivision, 10 one acre lots to our north. The, there's an older one acre lot subdivision to the east there as well. That's the old Forey Heights subdivision, 19 one acre lots. They also abut BLM land. There are two acre lots to our west. That's the Wald Vogel Acres subdivision. There's eight two acre lots in that project to our west and a little bit south. There's also 10 acre lots to our west. That's the Hound Haven Estate subdivision. And then just below that is the Open Sky Estate subdivision. That's six one to two acre lots, two two to five acre lots, and three seven to eight-plus acre lots. So we're consistent with what's been developed as far as residential estate-type lots in that area. Next slide. So touched a little bit on CUNA's comprehensive plan. As I said, it applies, the city is growing toward this area from the northeast. The green is their ag designation. And again, they define ag. They define ag to include five acre lots and support both small-scale and large-scale. The yellow is their low-density designation, and that's two dwelling units per acre. So that's half acre lots, essentially. And that's, you know, you will see that expanding out potentially and there's some of that yellow that already exists adjacent to us and in the area. Next slide. So I'll just emphasize Lupa a little bit. Commissioners, state code provides that an impact area is where growth is supposed to occur. That's where it's expected, that's where it's planned to occur and where it's coming. So that's where this project is located. But again, it provides a balance. It's not your typical city development. Cities don't do five acre lots. That's a county project and it helps provide that buffer as the city grows. That RUT will establish that more rural pattern before the city gets there. The project is consistent with their plan text and map, as shown by staff. We are proposing this, again, development on primarily non-prime farm ground that isn't taking anything out of production. Next slide. So touch a little bit on traffic. Commissioners, as you know, ACHD has a jurisdiction on traffic. As far as safety, site distance, they've evaluated this. There was some concern initially expressed by staff. They went and measured things. The site distance is adequate and it meets their standards. ACHD also acknowledged it's an extremely low volume of traffic with this very small project. The nature of Green Lane itself is important. You can see the curves on the blue arrows there, commissioners, in my slide. Green Lane itself is a traffic calming road. They, those turns are pretty direct and they have to slow down to take them. And those speed signs for those that abut and bookend this portion of the road are 20 miles an hour. So this is very different than accessing, say, McDermott or Robinson or Black Cat. That's a straight speedway. So ACHD has a jurisdiction and expertise here. We'd ask that, we defer to them. Next slide. There were some concerns raised about fire suppression and mitigation as well. Again, this was well fought out. There's an extensive wildfire safety plan prepared by a licensed engineer and approved by the Fire District and will be part of the CCNRs that are reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee with each home that's being constructed. Commissioners, I know you're familiar with these, but you have zones, right? That go out from the house at five feet, 30 feet, 60 feet, and 100 feet. And nothing flammable essentially next to the home. And then it graduates out to fire-resistant plantings and they can do more as they get further out. But it also requires fire-resistant materials and construction design for those specific homes. We'll also have interior sprinklers and provide limitations on ignition sources, as noted. Commissioners, this is a much less dense and better planned from a safety wildfire project than really anything that's out there. Commissioners, this is a quality project, very low impact. It complies with the applicable ordinances and comprehensive plan as discussed and found by staff in the Plan and Zoning Commission. We agree with the conditions of approval and we'd ask for your approval and I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Go ahead.
My water question, she knew what's coming. The water adequacy, the staff mentioned that that might be a condition of approval for water adequacy. You've obviously studied that in terms of, because you mentioned as well that it's agriculture-defined in the zoning ordinance of CUNA is small, large. So what did you anticipate in terms of your planning in terms of water? Two questions. One is for the kind of thing you're talking about, the maintenance of the full five acres. What they wanted to do with it is Department of Water Resources, you obviously consulted with them. Second thing is water adequacy for fire protection as well, those two things.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daly, so there's kind of two aspects. I'll address the fire flow question first. Fire District has approved this and they approved it prior to that additional irrigation water supply being granted. And in part, that was because of the steps that we're taking to protect the homes individually with the individual sprinkler systems that are located within the homes. There's also a reference in the fire plan to a, I think it's a 300-gallon storage tank to maintain that fire flow for those sprinklers that accompany each home or that are part of their design. So that's the home protection itself. The additional irrigation water rights, that's a recent development that were approved by the Idaho Department of Resources. They review that application and a sufficiency of the water in the area. As was noted, there was that letter that was submitted that simply was incorrect. It's not in an area of concern, it's not in an area of drilling concern, it's not in a moratorium area. It's, I looked at the IDWR site and there isn't any area of concern. And that letter was very generic without any site-specific reference. And it's tied, if it's accurate, it's tied to a site-specific analysis. If you can go a little further in the slides, Michaela, I'll show you what we did. Back up just one more, if you would. So we looked at the wells in the area on the IDWR website that are monitored. And the two that we looked at, we have one to the north that you can see and the one slightly to the west. And the well on the left, more on the left, is an irrigation well. It's about 240 feet deep. It was noted by the county engineer, you're probably drilling down to about 250 for these, which provides a lot of room for fluctuation. The well on the right is a domestic well, it's about 220 feet deep. And we looked at the testing data in those two wells. And as you know, when the irrigation water's in there, the surface water does this. It goes up and down with that surface irrigation water that's going on with the ag. Next slide. So this is the irrigation well we looked at. As you can see, I wrote in there kind of the foot depths. The top end there is about 107 and the bottom, closer to the average bottom, is 125. So you have kind of a 12 to 13-foot deviation with that water level. Again, I believe that's based on the irrigation water in the area. But if you do an average line on that fluctuation, you can tell that the water table is pretty stable in the area from that well's perspective. And then the next one, if you would, Michaela, this is the domestic well. And again, these numbers are also 2005 to 2023. The top end on this one is 85 to 90 feet. You can see that designation and it goes down to about 102, so a little smaller fluctuation there. But again, we're looking, if you put that average line across there, pretty stable aquifer when you look at that average. So Commissioner, I think based on our look at IDWR's data and their approval, there appears to be a stable aquifer that can be utilized for the irrigation water.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Other question for me, the temporary groundwater easement, is that a, it has an easement or is that a time certain, is it a limited amount of water?
Commissioner, I'm not sure which easement you're referring to. Is it for access to the canal?
Right.
I don't know if it's, I can get an answer to that question, if it's for access during construction or if it's simply for access for the canal company to maintain their facility.
No, that wasn't easement. I'm talking about the capability of using water for irrigation purposes on the land.
Oh, okay, I thought you said easement, I apologize. So I believe my understanding is that that water right is a water right that's been granted. It's not temporary. So it's able to be used for irrigation on this property.
And each lot will have a minimum amount of stream flow or what do they get?
As I visited with my client, Mr. Chairman, he felt like that the water right that they obtained was adequate to provide irrigation for essentially the full parcel that they might utilize.
So they won't need to use the groundwater, the well water for purposes of irrigating a little pasture or anything like that?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that they're looking at more of a community system for the irrigation compared to the individual wells for domestic.
Oh, well, that'd be good.
But I can, I'll confirm that.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
That was a follow-up question to his as well. Is they're going to have a community well or individual wells?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daly, like I said, I'll confirm that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, now we have a number of people who've signed up to testify. Kathy Ode. Okay, remember now, you have three minutes, thank you.
Evening commissioners, my name is Kathy Odie.
Odie.
Odie, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm opposed to this. We've been out there for about 27 years. We want to keep it real residential, keep it at 10 acres. I do have a question about the irrigation. Are they talking about putting in a big irrigation well for the community? Plus the eight domestic wells, because that's a lot of water coming out of the aquifer. I also wanted to talk about the slope.
Okay, the developer can answer that on rebuttal.
Okay.
Go ahead.
People that used to live there couldn't get up that slope in the winter. They used to have to park on the side of the road, which isn't very big, and walk across there because it is slick and it is a big slope. I kind of think maybe if they could wait till city services come out to do more housing out there, that's kind of all I have to say.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Just where are you physically located in relation to the property?
We are just right south. We're just across the canal from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Odie.
My name's Scott Odie, 4411 West Green Lane, CUNA, and I'm opposed to it. At the last commission meeting that we was here, the crossing was brought up about the slope and everything. Us neighbors that have seen this go on for years and years, we've watched cars not be able to go up the grade and have to park out on Green Lane during the wintertime. And there's really not that much room there to be parked in. Looking at, trying to understand the codes is difficult to do, but the best I've been able to understand is it's a 10% grade is the maximum code that's supposed to be there. And some of the codes even call for a six. But even if you stick with the 10%, the best that we've been able to come up with is an 11.3% grade. And that depends on also how much they have to raise the ditch bank road and the bridge to make it compliant when they widen it. And at 11.3%, that's a 13% increase in the grade. So my question is, if that's proper, if that's code, even though the fire department cleared it and said it was okay, is this part of Canyon County's code? And if it is, how come it's okay that it can be more? Because that's a, you know, if they say it's okay to be 13% over, does that mean all the codes can be 13% over? That's all I got to say.
Okay, any questions for Scott Odie? Okay.
Well, I was just wondering, Mr. Chairman, if maybe staff wanted to address that?
Or the developer could address it in their rebuttal.
Commissioner Davidson, I can address that quickly. So for private roads, we have an allowance for an alternative design. So if it's approved by the county engineer, then we can approve an alternative design for a private road. So that can encompass a lot of different findings. It can have to do with frontage, it can have to do with the width. It just has to be determined that it's safe. So you, in this instance, I checked in with our county engineering team and they indicated that as long as the fire department could access it, that 10% grade comes from a fire code. And so that's why he was able to say that it was appropriate because the fire authority indicated that it was.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odie, thank you. Ted Burke.
Yes?
Did you want to?
No, just in favor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vincent Blommer.
Michaela, would you mind putting a map up that we can just reference?
Good evening commissioners, my name is Vincent Blommer. I live at 4555 West Green Lane. And I'm obviously opposed to this subdivision. Big thing before I get started in some of the points that I made in my letter was this recent water permit that was pulled by the applicant. That clearly changes the parameters of this property. The amount of water that he's allowed to pull out of the ground is, makes that farmland irrigable. He can irrigate it. There's like, my calculations is 300, about 320 gallons per minute to be able to irrigate that and create farmland. That's, changes the parameter of this original applicant. Before, there was no surface water or groundwater. Let's get back to this slope access point. This, she's right, the code does allow for an alternative as long as it's safe and not detrimental to the public. This slope goes directly into a public road. So as residents come off of this, their lane, they have to stop to the public road. So you have this high slope coming directly in a public road. I think this should be tabled until the engineer can show that he can mitigate this issue. Because otherwise, I think it opens the county for a liability because I'd be happy to testify. Currently, I don't think they're addressing the amount of land that's not usable. One of the parcels I calculated is 3.2 acres, this parcel here. And that's based on how much, how much land is in the canal and that is required by the canal company for access. So you have a, none of these parcels are even close to five acres. I think the plat should be replanted and redesigned. And then I, the inadequate infrastructure that continues to baffle me, no improvements have been offered within seven miles of this subdivision. Yes, the subdivision has minimal impact, but where are these people going? They're all two-lane roads, 10 miles, two lanes, they all back up. I don't know, did anybody see the parking lot coming in tonight? That's a direct response to the decisions made in this room. And until that is somewhat mitigated, I think let's stay with the RR. And RR is more representative of the area. And I'm sure the comprehensive plan allows for RR to continue. Let's not do real residential transition before the city even gets to us. Contrary to Mr. Lakey's statement, we're about three miles from the city. It's, we got a ways to go, so there's no reason to bring the city to us that live out there. The other thing that does irritate me is how they raise over the environmental aspect of this. But I'm, my time is up.
Thank you, any questions? Any questions? Thank you, sir. Leslie Van Der Schaaf.
Hello Commissioners. Thank you for being here tonight and listening to our concerns. My name is Leslie Van Der Skoff, and I live at 3633 Green Lane, and I've lived here almost my entire life, since my dad built our dairy in 1978. I submitted written testimony, and I sure hope you had a chance to review it. I wanted to highlight a few of my concerns. The biggest concern I have is in the impact of the proximity of RUT and additional development next to our dairy. If you don't mind, I'm going to read a portion of the Ada County Comprehensive Plan 2025, page 62, Focus Area 2, Coordinated Growth. It lists dairies, and it states residential development is discouraged adjacent to these uses. And if we pull up Kuna's Comprehensive Plan, page 60, it states, "Within rural areas and agriculture lands, retention of available land for commercial farms, dairies, and agriculture. Increasing the zoning to RUT for London Bridge will set off a chain reaction of additional parcels asking for the RUT zoning, and before long, we could be surrounded by houses. Not necessarily because this is the proper place for growth, but because land further out is cheaper and developers can yield higher profits. Please deny this application and direct RUT to where it belongs, next to the city, not out in the country. We've already endured increased scrutiny and complaints from the Bridle Ridge subdivision, which, by the way, is zoned RR. It's one acre lots because that was allowed within the RR zoning at that time. There was open spaces included within that subdivision for farming purposes. Last winter, we had the sheriff out several times due to complaints about dirt clots on the road. There was a period of time I was out there with a broom and shovel on a daily basis, attempting to keep the road clears. Even the deputy started showing up with his own shovel to aid in our efforts. Last winter, we also had the Idaho Department of Agriculture show up on a welfare complaint that we weren't giving our cows water, a ludicrous thought to us, being as the primary product we produce is milk, which is 87% water. These complaints yielded not a single citation or warning. We were simply going about earning a living, doing nothing wrong. There, this has been a hardship for us, and it will only worsen with additional developments. We own the 48 acres located on Green Lane, but we rent two other animal facilities, as well as rent 1,500 acres of farm ground in the Kuna area. Our current operation includes two dairies at Heffer Facility and 1,500 acres, but we only own the 48 acres, which houses the dairy and supporting farm ground. Should this zoning change be approved, we lose. My two sons, who wish to join the family business, also lose. One son is halfway through his bachelor's degree for agricultural business and aspires to come home and work on the family farm, and his future takes a left turn if this zoning is approved. Additionally, despite neighborhood meetings, the developer has not won the favor of any of the neighbors. We heard from many who wanted to sign a petition, which is in the written testimony. I brought, I, this is a map, which shows the results. There are several elderly couples who live on Green Lane and didn't make the trip to Ada County this evening. However, you can see on the petition and on the map that they are all opposed. This map represents those who live on Green Lane, and as you can see, every single Green Lane address is opposed to this subdivision. Not a single one is in favor.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Thank you. Christine Vanderwood. Welcome, Christine.
Thank you Commissioners for hearing me. My name is Christine Vanderwada, and I live at 4250 West Kuna Road. However, I, along with my husband, built the dairy farm at 3633 Green Lane. You just heard from my daughter. So, I lived for 22 years on Green Lane, where we had built a dairy farm and raised our family. Currently, my daughter and son-in-law own and operate the dairy, raising their children in the very same home we raised ours in. I still have a vested interest in the financial future of the dairy farm in Green Lane. Overall, I have driven that road, Green Lane, almost daily for close to 50 years. I am opposed to rezoning this land to RUT. It is not in harmony with future agricultural business use. This proposed development shares a property line with a dairy that has been in operation for almost 50 years. There is another dairy just 3,000 feet away, as well as a pig farm, farm only 2,600 feet away. One and a half miles away is another dairy. Obviously, this is an active agricultural business use area. Adding homes does not complement the area, but rather is a precursor to further development, eventually driving agricultural business out. An increase in houses will increase traffic on a road used by large farm equipment that is often extra wide and slow. Green Lane connects the ends of McDermott and Black Cat. Both of those ends have curves that have often been the site of accidents. There may be slower speeds posted at the curves, but they are often ignored. Additionally, there is little to no street lighting on Green Lane, making it harder to negotiate the curve at night if you are unfamiliar with the road. The complaints concerning flies and dirt on roads, as well as the lack of understanding of animal husbandry, among other things, will make life harder for existing farms that have been in operation for decades. This will place a financial burden on them, tying their hands for future expansion of their farming operations and facilities. Again, I ask you to vote no on the proposed change to RUT. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Thank you. Ted Van Der Schaaf.
This one? Or did you want a different one?
I'll start with that. Hello Commissioners, Ted Van Der Skoff, 3633 West Green Lane. I'm a dairy farmer there. We operate the dairy farm, as my wife and mother-in-law just mentioned. I wanted to speak a little bit to, I guess, Mr. Lakey's comments. He talked about the, the character and kind of the, the character of the area, and, and how it's wonderful, and people want to come out to it. Well, that's why we're there. We're trying to maintain that character, and we feel that when you put eight, eight new homes in, in our neighborhood, it changes the character. And so, that's the first thing I wanted to, to mention. We have operated a dairy farm there. Every time we bring more people out, we, we, we create more nuisances to our operation. You know, as, as neighbors and general laypeople in the area, businessmen, when we come into these hearings, we don't, we are not professional. We're not attorneys. We're trying to figure out what laws apply and what laws don't. Sometimes we miss things and get things mixed up. But one thing what we've started to learn is that we have to apply comprehensive plans and, and those laws. And so, we're trying to figure out which ones apply here and which ones don't. But what I heard is Kuna's Comprehensive Plan applies. And in reading through Kuna's Comprehensive Plan, it says that the plan needs to protect dairy facilities and those lands adjacent so that we can operate. And when we start putting RUT into these areas, what I'm afraid is what's going to happen is we're going to start seeing more and more applications, and it's going to start gobbling up our ground. Right now, this application, if you go to the next map, please, this application is directly behind my dairy in relationship to Kuna. It's actually on the other side of my dairy. It's up against BLM. Mr. Lakey's comments were, were that RUT is a transition to BLM, to the, to the rural. And my suggestion is actually RUT is supposed to be a transition from town into the country. And so, this place to me, or this applicant, is actually trying to put this in the wrong place. I understand it was a dry spot to put some houses, but no longer is it that. He has a full water right. Actually, you keep asking about how much water he has. .76, if you get into water right, it's 4.5 acre feet per acre. That's a full water right as a farmer. So, now that is farm ground. To me, putting RUT out here behind my dairy farm is the wrong approach. We should be putting this closer into town so that town can slowly build out and infill this as, as able to with city services. Putting this on the other side of my dairy actually changes the entire community there, the entire neighborhood, and creates a nuisance for my operation and several of the other ones around. This map shows all of the CAFOs and all of the area operations in the area. And to me, this is just the start of more and more RUT applications. There's already a second one that's lim, that's identified there. That's also, you're going to be hearing on that here in a couple of weeks. So, we have two already in process. I'm concerned for my operation. I'm concerned for my livelihood. And so, with that, I'll, I'll stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you, sir. Dustin Ferdinand.
Evening Commissioners. Dustin Ferdinand. I live at 5197 South Happy Valley Road, just three miles from this proposed project. Not to reiterate over kind of what's already been said, I'll just kind of glimpse over a few things. So, I've grown up in the community. I've grown there, basically born and raised there. As far as some of the traffic concerns, so I own excavation business. And so, starting Green Lane, it starts at the end of Black Cat Road. And that's the, that's, that's the first hard sharp, sharp 90-degree corner coming into Green Lane. So, on average, I get called probably about every two years to replace, you know, half-car-sized boulders that get wiped out, that the homeowners of Visa Myers have actually put on the corner of the road to protect their house. And multiple times, cars have actually flown over those rocks and ended up within just a few feet of their bedroom. And, you know, we keep increasing the size of it because there's accidents that actually keep happening on that side already. So, I mean, that's obviously a concern of, you know, you get more residents out there. And it's, it's a, it's a very tight two-lane road. It's not your normal, you know, road heading into radiant or whatever. It's, it's tight. You know, I drive my dump truck and trailer on there, and I have a hard time staying on the road. So, we got the concerns obviously there with that. So, the right-to-farm language, so the Bridle Ridge subdivision, they have that on their subdivision. Well, but it doesn't stop the complaints. So, they get the, you know, the Van Der Skoffs. And the reason I'm here for the Van Der Skoffs is I grew up, I actually worked on that dairy as a kid. And I, I see the impact of what's happening here in the area. These dairies keep getting pushed out further and further. Well, sorry, back to the right, right-to-farm language. So, it's already on the Bridle Ridge subdivision. Well, they're still getting complaints. The cops are still showing up out there. They're still stressing out. You know, it's causing conflict in their life, their operation. It's making it harder. To put another subdivision out there with more people, yeah, you can put out there, well, you guys know you're coming around to dairy. Well, it, it still doesn't stop them from calling the cops, making the complaints, and that. And then, you know, you keep condensing around the dairies. Where are they going to go? They're, they are running out of room. There is nowhere else for them to go. My, my feeling, belief is, we do continue to put homes around our agricultural, it is going to cut them out. It's going to shut them off. Therefore, I don't think the, the right-to-farm language, I'll, I'll finish it. Right, the right-to-farm language is going to help, help anybody out there.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from this, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Detimus Ferdinand?
Opposed.
Okay, so you don't want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, he said, he said opposed.
Okay, good enough. Paul Bodis? Hold up, Paul. Go ahead. Welcome to our meeting.
Hi, thanks for hearing me. My name is Paul Bodis. I live at 2375 Rocking Horse Place. That's part of the Bridle Ridge subdivision there. Been out there for, since basically owning the property in 2007, and since then. I'm in favor of allowing this to happen. The last thing I want to do, see happen is to wait until city services arise, and then all of a sudden, everybody just throw in third acre, quarter acre lots out there because there's a lot of open ground that's going to be available as soon as city services are available for that type of subdivision to acquire. So, that, the idea of five acre lots where you can still manage farming on that in general is good. How they're making their arrangements for limited water use, I don't know. But for, for me, I, I would rather see a five acre transition toward the city than having a subdivision transition coming toward me. As far as the distance goes, from the beginning of Green Lane, it's two miles to two different subdivisions that are going in, in the Kuna impact, in the Kuna area, that they're currently either looking to approve or have already been approved. And last thing that just kind of seems to be bothering a lot of these people is that the slope of this road, when you're on the bridge, you've got visual access because you're sitting way above the road. There is nothing on the south side of the road to obscure your view. So, when you're driving over the bridge, even with the dis, the construction that they're suggesting, you've got a view almost clear to the west end of that road, and then you have another quarter-mile view to the east side. So, as far as people just running up and running down that deal and not being able to see traffic coming is a really incredibly small issue. But outside of that, it's, it's, for some of the complaints, now I'll just, for some of the complaints, there's been complaints about the dairy. I have a friend who's a motor officer that drives through that. Yeah, when that, when it's inches deep in mud, it's, that's a reasonable complaint for the road. But Ted Van Der Schaaf, I mean, these guys are very responsive and kind people. And they're out there with their front loader, and they're clearing the road, and that's, that's, you know, a reasonable solution. So, I don't, I don't know what specific other complaints that they've had, but I do know that was one of the ones. But outside of that, the rest of us just drive cars, so I don't think it's a big issue for us.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commission? Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else, before we get to a rebuttal, that wishes to testify on this issue? You're waving at us. Give us your name and address.
My name is George Mansfield. Address is 4045 Green Lane. We're the, we are the area of impact for this one. We're that little triangle there. I don't know how to show it there, to the east of it. So, we'll be the most direct neighbors. Now, this little East European here, struggling with his English, now is facing Idaho Senator. Wow, only in America. That well the Senator was speaking about, 220 well, is my well. It's our well. And we're already sucking it dry. I don't believe, I believe he's trying to deceive you that the water level is okay. It is not. We already sucking sand out of the well when we run it too high. Now, I ask for more time. My wife is here. I should get six minutes, but I won't be able to go through all of it. This may be a small project for the Honorable Senator Lakey, but it is a large leap for us because they'll suck our water dry, they'll cause problems. They already killed our dog or maimed our dog. We're deceiving different information from the fire department, which we called today, and from ACHD. What we've heard is from the Kuna Rural Fire Department, which we called, is that nothing was approved. There was something with conceptual design or something, but that, that may have been just, just conceptual design, but we were, the lady repeated, right?
They did not approve.
That they did not approve. My wife was on the phone with me. ACHD, the same thing. They're measuring to the fog line. And here's our presentation. If you don't mind, this is the bridge, and this is the car. Now, they're measuring 60 feet. We measured 55 when we checked it with my wife, or even less, 50. And that's measuring from the fog line on the bottom when the road turns to the bridge. Am I doing it? I mean, does it make sense? This is where the bridge is. This is the west end of the bridge, and this is where the fog line is for the road. We're measuring this run here to be much less than the 60 feet. And we talked to, what is his name, those engineers there?
Oh, the county engineer.
County engineers. And they actually agree with us when we talked to them today. So, you cannot have it right next to the fog line, so you're going to lose 50 feet. And we measured a slope, which is amazing, 13 to 15. Slope is a rise overrun. We measured it at 15, 13 to 15 with my wife when we actually did it. And that was to the fog line. If you do the fog line, it even works. Now, we talked to the fire department. They say the bridge has to be rebuilt and has to be higher. Now, we're moving this higher, even higher than that. That's coming to 17. That's insane. Now, we look at the laws. I don't know how much time I have. I'm kind of nervous running this. But there's the C-section under the law. By the way, this is the communication between the engineers- By the way, this is the communication between the engineers here, when they're actually confessing that, you already heard ten point something, but I've heard eleven, even measuring by their standard. Please, let's re-measure it. This is really dangerous. I think it's really seventeen feet, seventeen percent. My little car. So, most of the time, the readers who live there, next to us, parked down here in the winter when it was icy. It really blocks the road, and there is not much space to do it. It's extremely dangerous. They couldn't make it up here. But much worse thing is when you get seventeen slope, or fifteen slope, I mean, it's gonna run in there and somebody's gonna get hurt. Reader died in his septic tank, he drowned in there, our dog was hurt. Let's, this property is cursed.
Okay.
Let's make sure, I mean, does it make sense? I was asking for six minutes because my wife is here, and she can continue the presentation.
Go ahead.
All right, well, go ahead, you got three minutes.
Okay.
But only one can testify at a time, please.
I'm Linda Mansfeld, and we have a house at 4045 Green Lane, and we're right, the property east to the proposed subdivision. And, yeah, we just want to make a continuation of that, of the slope, right?
The slope is too short.
That the slope is too short and too close to the fog line, and, you know, we worry about, you know, the car going off the road and going to the houses just south, I mean, just north of Green Lane going off into their yards. I also worry about water, that they're gonna be sucking our wells dry. I mean, people have had to dig their wells deeper.
They were sucking sand.
Yeah, we've been sucking sand in our well, and other people have had to dig their wells deeper. So, I am largely concerned about the water, and...
The engineers said it's already eleven point two.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay, so, yeah, we were just looking at this thing from Ted Burke on the slope.
Emails.
An email where he said that the lip of the bridge deck's approximately eleven point two percent, which is too much.
And, so, it doesn't meet?
And so, yeah, it doesn't meet this, this letter C of the construction standards that it says, "The applicant can demonstrate their proposed overall design meets or exceeds the intent of the required standards of this article shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare."
Safety.
Safety, you know, and...
Shall not exceed ten.
And there's also, "On design standards on Section Eight, no segment of the travel wave of private road shall exceed ten percent grade. Fire apparatus, roadways, and locations that front buildings at intersections with other roads and in front of higher hydrants shall not exceed eight percent." And this is what, and it said what, that they want eleven point two percent, we read?
But we measured fifteen to...
And we measured like thirteen to fifteen. Yes, we measured thirteen to fifteen with my husband.
And when the bridge is gonna be seventeen.
And when they raise this bridge, it's gonna be a lot higher, around seventeen.
I mean, seventeen is a huge number versus ten. Shall we show it to them? I'm out of time.
Yeah, so seventeen is a huge difference from ten.
All right.
That's it, that's my piece. But, yeah, I hope you guys vote no on this.
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you very much, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that wants to testify before we get into rebuttals? Okay, Mr. Lakey, if you'd like to take a few minutes, and I think we have five minutes for rebuttal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, before we start again, for the record, Todd Lakey, attorney with Lakey-Villegas Law, 141 East Carlton, Meridian, Idaho. Commissioners, just said, I'll just clarify, you know, in Idaho, we have citizen legislators, we have regular day jobs, or we're retired. I'm not here in my senator capacity, you know that very well. I'm here as an attorney that has a business and private practice. Commissioners, so, you also know that land use isn't a popularity contest. You don't have neighbors vote on what you can and can't do on your property. The issue is compliance with your zoning ordinance and with your comprehensive plan. And that's been very well laid out and analyzed by staff, recognized by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and is also described in our submittals. The CUNA comprehensive plan governs, not Ada County's comprehensive plan. In your ordinance, you adopted the CUNA plan, and it's their impact area, again, where growth is supposed to occur. The RUT zone, we wouldn't put five-acre lots right next to city limits. You don't do that because you essentially hem the city in. They can't go through those properties and develop. So, you put them out on the edge, again, this is a buffer between public land, which will be open, and ultimately, more dense development that will be coming in this direction. Again, defer to ACHD, they analyze the traffic, the site distance, the safety of the road, it meets their standards. Also defer to the engineers, I'm not one, but the county has one, and Mr. Burke is one, and they've looked at this. You do have the alternate compliance, and the goal there and recognition there is, ten percent is the standard in the ordinance, but it recognizes that that's a standard to try to achieve safety and access, particularly for fire vehicles. And if you can show and demonstrate that that works, which the fire district hasn't approved it, then that access is appropriate. And we also will be improving that access, the access itself, the apron, to ACHD standards, and paving the road, which hasn't been paved previously, along with the road maintenance agreement and regular things that will occur on that that hasn't been much of a benefit in the past. Couple of responses on your well question, Commissioners. So, there'll be a potable well, and then they haven't decided if they're going to use a community irrigation well or individual irrigation wells on the property. I think they could do either one. The amount of water, again, speaking to the engineer, is enough water essentially to water an acre of lawn. It's based on the flow, not based on the size. So, if you're using less water, then you can irrigate more of the land. Commissioners, again, CUNA comprehensive plan designates this as agriculture, and they recognize that five-acre parcels are small-scale ag and exist and can coexist in the same area as the larger-scale ag that you see out there. So, this fits with their comprehensive plan, the additional water rights will allow for perhaps some more animals and larger gardens, or maybe some other type of smaller-scale ag that that person may be interested in. But it's not prime farm ground primarily, as was shown, even if it's irrigated. I think the key point there is, Commissioners, that it hasn't been in ag. We're not taking ground out of ag as part of this project, we're reducing the pressure to develop that existing ag. Commissioners, the wells that we looked at for IDWR are not that well for the individual that lives next to us. You can see it was a little bit of distance from our site, but those are wells that are monitored by IDWR, and they do show the consistency of the aquifer in the area as far as the average, recognizing the irrigation water that comes in. Commissioners, this is an impact area where an appropriate type of development that can coexist with ag, we fit with the existing residential estate lot sizes that are already out there, and will, again, acknowledge and include in our CCNRs additional things to help protect and recognize that this impact area still has agricultural operations in it. With that, Commissioners, we ask for your approval, and I'd stand for questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, sir.
The, well, a couple things just to clarify in my mind, it's some of the statements you've made and they've made. The Department of Water Resources, as you've stated, has reviewed this in terms of water adequacy, correct?
They reviewed the application and approved it.
The second thing is, the fire department, and this might be for staff, the fire department did indicate that they analyzed it in terms of what was being proposed, in terms of the slope, et cetera, and that it would be adequate for delivery of water in it in case of a fire or whatever, correct?
Commissioner Daley, they spoke more to what the road slope was going to be, and then they would have to sign off on this application before it would be at the final plat stage.
The final plat, in terms of, once the final plat and the development and the slope, et cetera, they would then look at it and sign off on it, yes or no, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, if I might add just a little bit to that. Not just the analysis, but they actually took their vehicles out there and drove them, and both coming in and coming out, that was part of their analysis to determine that it was sufficient.
And then, Mr. Lakey, again, the Right to Farm Act, that is going to be clarified when the development happens and the individuals purchase the property, that will be in the covenants, et cetera. So, they will be clearly understand that there's dairies around there, there's a big farm around there, they're in a dairy area, correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, that is correct. It will be in the CCNRs. If somehow they missed it as they were driving by, it will be in the CCNRs, they would clearly be made aware of that. They get that as part of the property purchase and agree to it.
Let's see.
Is the CCNRs, is that in the development agreement, or is that part of the conditions of approval?
I believe that's in the conditions of approval. I don't have them in front of me, but I believe it's in there. If it's not, we're happy to have it there.
I thought I read that the Right to Farm Act was to be included on the plat, but it was not in the CCNRs. Am I missing something?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. The condition is that it's included on the face of the plat, and then you could also request to have it included in their CCNRs if they were not already planning on doing so. Right now, we just have their draft CCNRs.
Okay, all right. So, we could ask for that, okay. Go ahead, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Chairman. If we were intended to do it, well, we're happy to have a condition that requires it.
Did you have anything else? Nope, that's it. Did you have any questions? Go ahead.
So, just to follow up on the slope of the road and the bridge, so, it sounds like the fire department has signed off on it, but some of the concerns we heard from the testimony relate to, in the wintertime, if it gets icy, it could be a danger for cars slipping down the slope, and I hadn't heard any, I can't remember if I heard anything from you regarding the potential danger of icy conditions and cars not being able to stop.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, so, one of the benefits of having the property have multiple homeowners on it compared to the one, they have a road maintenance agreement that's required as part of the approval of this subdivision, which requires that the road be maintained, so plowed, sanded, those kind of things in the winter when they have those conditions. So, I think there's the additional maintenance that comes with this, and, again, that slope condition is part of what the standard is, we're not substantially higher than that requirement, and it's been reviewed by our engineer and the county engineer, and they found that it was adequate. So, you have kind of two things addressing that.
And then, we've heard, you know, about the right-to-farm language being included, but from what we've heard from testimony, it sounds like you, even with that, you still have people moving in, maybe they're not farm folk, they're city folk, maybe they're from LA, I mean, who knows, but they're still, despite, you know, knowing what they move to, they still seem to be, I don't know if harassing is the right word, but making complaints and getting the police out there. You know, there are certain people who think that every farming operation is abusing animals, and, you know, we've had discussion recently when we voted on a solar farm project sort of out in that part of the county, that it was not really within the character of the kind of agricultural community. I mean, we heard a lot of testimony about that. I'm hearing sort of similar sentiments about this project, that it's, you know, not within the same kind of agricultural character, and then when I hear complaints from the farmers that they're, you know, having complaints lodged against them by people who chose to move out there, it just makes me wonder how compatible this is.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, so, I think that requires a look at the overall character of the area as well. This is not way out in the county, this is in an impact area. So, in an impact area, you're trying to strike that balance, right? Under LUPA, that's where growth is happening, where it's supposed to occur, recognizing that there's agricultural operations that are still located in an impact area, but that's an area where growth is supposed to happen versus way out in the county, whether it's the solar farm or whatever. That impact area comes with different criteria for development and allows for different things. In this case, it allows for five-acre parcels and recognizes that small-scale ag on five-acre parcels, which is very, very, very low density, can coexist with agricultural operations that are still in the area. Certainly acknowledge that some folks may complain. What you try to do is balance that with the right-to-farm that tells them you can't complain for lawfully conducted agricultural operations. If they're lawfully, if they're being lawfully conducted, those people will figure that out, that their complaints aren't meritorious. The law enforcement will come out if they do respond and say, "Sorry, they get to do this, they were here first, that's a lawfully conducted agricultural operation." But hopefully, again, the CCNRs inform them that lawful ag is still allowed to operate in Idaho.
Could you think of any other conditions or potential CCNRs that might help mitigate against some of that?
In addition to the right-to-farm, I mean, you can add language to it that specifically says, "There are existing agricultural operations in the area," part of what they sign off on, not just the generic right-to-farm, which says you can't complain about lawfully conducted agricultural operations. They'd specifically acknowledge, yes, there's agricultural operations in the area.
Any other questions?
So, under the current zoning, how many houses would you be able to get in? Would that be four?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, I believe RR is ten-acre lots. So, forty acres, basically, yes.
Any other questions?
I think that's all I had.
Okay, you have any questions? Go ahead.
Just one more question. You indicated, now, right across the canal to the north, I guess that's to the north, is the development that was developed with one-acre lots because it was the zoning at the time, correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, correct. That's the old non-farm, or I think that's what they were called in Ada County, that ordinance is no longer in existence, but it was developed under that, which provided for smaller parcels and then a larger parcel. This, that ordinance doesn't exist anymore, but that's what was approved at the time, and I don't know if it was in the impact area at the time or not, but it is now.
Mr. Chairman, and you indicated that there were, I think you showed on the map that there were other developments that were being approved relative, and this was further, closer to the city of CUNA, correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, my map showed existing, so I don't know, Kayla, if you can find that, kind of thumb through it, but mine were existing developments. I believe another individual talked about developments that are in process of approval by the city of CUNA within two miles. I didn't, I didn't address those.
Oh, it wasn't you, I knew somebody said it.
Those are the ones I showed, the splits and the parcels that exist out there, ranging from one acre to two acres.
Excuse me, that other map that you'd went, you thumb through, that showed the larger area of the CUNA, that one right there. So, there are other developments within the CUNA, either city limits or impact zone?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, yes, without naming them specifically, and I, my measurement on Google Maps was to city limits, and I came up with a mile and a half. I don't know where main lines are, but that was my measurement.
That's how close this is to the city limits, it's basically a mile and a half. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have one question. The Cunamora Canal that this property butts on, is it a line canal?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know the answer to that question, I can ask if...
Commissioner Daley says he doesn't think it is, because that has impact with the water discharge, which would have a large impact in the wells, around, surrounding wells.
Commissioner Beck, I think that was in those, in those well logs that I showed, when the irrigation water is in, it does have a ten-to-twelve-foot fluctuation at the top end. And... when the irrigation water is in, it does have a 10 to 12 foot fluctuation at the top end. And the top end in this case was 107 to 125, and the other it was like 90 to 102. But again, the well depth would be down to 250, so well below that.
Yeah, yeah, all right. All right, thank you, thank you. All right. Kayla, are there any documents that need to be added to the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will be adding my presentation, the documents that you received earlier, and then all of the presentations that we've seen tonight.
How about the bridge that we had? Is that going to be added?
I'm not able to add that one. But it'll be in the record.
All right, in the record, the bridge is there. All right. Are there any questions, Michaela, before we close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to Michaela, so there's nothing that was mentioned here that needs to be put in the record that you identified, other than what you just said?
Commissioner Daley, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, I will close the public hearing on application 2024-01209-ZCDA-SPR, London Bridge subdivision. The hearing being held and the public hearing closed, it's now before us. And anybody like to kick it off?
Well, maybe kick it off for discussion. I guess I am concerned about, you know, the changing character of the agricultural area. You know, these were the arguments that came up in the solar farm hearing. On the other hand, this is a much smaller project in scale. It's eight houses compared to thousands of solar panels. But I am concerned for the future of the area. You know, when you hear the complaints, the kind of the culture clash of the new people moving in versus the people who've been there already. And I'm trying to think if there's any potential additional conditions that could be put on to, you know, to address some of that. And at this exact point, I don't know what those would be, but that's kind of my thought at the moment.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I guess based on the law and what was presented, I think, one, there's compliance with the ordinance. It's a matter of, like Mr. Davidson was saying, the character. But this is a developing area. And as, I can't remember which gentleman said it, but he said five acre lots are better than one acre lots or half acre lots, which is if it moves further develop. This would lock it into the five acre lots as opposed to something more developed at some future point.
Like one third of quarter acre lots.
Correct. So it seems to me, I'm inclined to agree with the presentation and approve it, but open to further discussion.
Well, I think this complies with our ordinance. It complies with the area of impact ordinance, just like we asked it to. And it does seem though that the, with the city approaching, which it is, that I'd rather have, if I lived out there, I'd rather have eight homes than 40. And that's what couldn't happen in the future. And so I think it would be compatible with the neighborhood. And I do think that with the inclusion of the Right to Farm Act in the plat, and the developers said they will include it in their restrictive covenants, I'm prepared to support it. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just one more, my comment. My water concerns, and you asked the question about the lining, which is appropriate here. These would be deeper wells, which wouldn't necessarily be affected by the lining of the...
Even the shallower wells will not be affected because the canal's not lined.
At this point.
At this point, yeah. It could be at one point, we can't control that.
But these were water rights that were granted by the Department of Water Resources. So they now have a position different than someone else might have, because these are granted water rights.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess my only question would be if the board would want a table to consider any additional conditions of approval, or if you feel that the project as presented is sufficient to protect the rights of the neighbors.
Well, I'm prepared to proceed this evening. I don't know what else would be necessary or even allowable.
Well, I don't know either, that's why...
Well, Mr. Chairman, just as a comment to follow up on Commissioner Davidson, I think the developer has indicated that they are willing to do some things, because it's still in its preliminary approval process. And there are certain things that have to be, like the slope of the bridge for fire protection. Those are the kinds of things that are actually going to have to be done as conditions as well as they move through the process.
There's already a pretty detailed list of requirements if you... So anyway, is there any other discussion?
I'll just say, some developers have, you know, given us their word that they only will sell to people of a certain type of character. I don't know if that's something that could ever be required, but you'd certainly hope that the developers take a look at that, of who they're going to sell houses to and who they end up putting into the community. Because obviously, when you do have a bit of a culture clash, it just leads to endless years of complaints and hearings and this and that. And it's something we all hope that we can avoid out in the county.
I wish that were totally avoidable, but I don't think it is.
Maybe if it was in the constitution to allow for that, we might consider something like that, but I don't think it is.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Kayla, accept the motion.
I move to approve application number 2024-01209-ZC-DA-S-P-R, based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the discussion we had this evening and information presented tonight.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I'll next open the public hearing on application 2024-02388-VAC Everado Santillan. And we'll ask Brent to give us a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2024-02388-V-A-C is a variance to allow structures to encroach into the required setbacks, as well as an accessory use application for a secondary dwelling within a detached accessory structure that exceeds 1,500 square feet. The general location for this property is in the Barber Valley and is located near the Boise River Green Belt and the Barber Pool Reserve. The subject property is located at 6439 East Warm Springs Avenue and contains 0.83 acres in the rural preservation district. The property is a legal non-conforming property in the rural preservation district and is a rural residence for dimensional standards. Rural residences are defined in the Ada County Code as farm development rights, parcels, non-farm residential lots, and non-conforming residential properties under two and a half acres in a rural-based district. The property is also located in Boise's area of city impact. The future line use map of the Boise Conference of Plan as adopted by Ada County designates the size of large lot, which is primarily attended for detached single-family homes on large lots. This is the second time that variance has been applied on this property. The first variance was granted by the board back in 2020 for the south property line to have a setback of five feet instead of 25 feet. At that time, the board had the following condition of approval for the property to have an individual, for the property not to have an individual well for domestic water or septic system. The applicant has tried to satisfy that condition by hooking up to the Boise City sewer system. However, they were not able to hook up to the sewer system without annexing the property into the city. Therefore, the applicant needed to come forth with a new variance before the board. With the new application, there would not be a condition to hook up to the sewer system, and they would be able to have a septic system. However, the placement of the septic system necessitates the need for the applicant to apply for two new variances. The Central District Health Department has approved the location of the septic system and drain felt to be located in the center of the property as shown on the screen. The applicant has also applied for an accessory use application for a secondary dwelling within a detached accessory structure that exceeds 1,500 square feet. The lower level of the structure is proposed to be a garage, and the second level will be an approximately 900 square foot secondary dwelling that will be occupied by a family member. The first, the applicant has requested approval of two variances. The first variance is to allow for properties on the property to encroach into the required setbacks. And so the applicant is requesting a variance so that they could encroach into all three of the setbacks on all three property lines. The second variance is for the accessory structure and secondary dwelling to be within the front yard. In order to grant variance, three findings need to be made. One, the variance should not grant a special privilege as otherwise allowed in the base district. Two, the variance relieves undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. And three, the variance should not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the variances do not constitute granting of a special right or privilege as a single-family dwelling is a principal permitted use for a rural residence in the rural preservation district. And the accessory structures and secondary dwelling are accessory uses to the single-family dwelling. Also, a previous variance has been granted in the past on this property, allowing for structure to encroach into a setback. Staff also finds that the variances relieve an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The subject property has an irregular shape of a triangle, which limits the area within which the parcel in which to build. The applicant has received a septic permit from the Central District Health Department. As evidenced on the site plan, the septic system and drain field are located near the center of the property. This necessitates that any structures on the property will need to be to the side or rear of the septic system and drain field. Therefore, this requires for the principal permitted dwelling and the accessory structures to encroach into the 25-foot rear and side yard setbacks. It also requires for the accessory structure to possibly encroach into the 50-foot front yard setback along Warm Springs Avenue. Therefore, the most advantageous location for the principal permitted dwelling is at the rear of the property. And any additional structures to be built on the property will be, by default, located in both the front and side yards of the property as kind of shown on the screen there. Staff finds that this variance is not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare because the applicant will need to obtain building permits for the structures. Information regarding the variances were transmitted to affected public agencies charged with the protection of the health, public health and safety. And none of the agencies have indicated that the variances would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Two nearby neighboring property owners have submitted written testimony in opposition to the project. And the Barber Valley Neighborhood Association has provided written testimony in favor of the project. The neighbors in opposition to the project had questioned if the non-conforming properties in compliance with the rural preservation district. They also have concerns regarding the proposed number of structures on the property and lock coverage. And they are also opposed to the height of the accessory structure and the property being on a septic system. They also feel that the secondary dwelling in the front yard is a special right and privilege, and thus is not in compliance with the variance finding. One of the neighbors also mentioned that the secondary dwelling is going to impact their views. In reviewing the neighbor's comments, staff finds that the subject property is a legal non-conforming property and is eligible for building permits. The footprints of the proposed structures on the property are in compliance with a 20% maximum lock coverage. Also, as condition, the accessory structures are limited to a maximum high of 24 feet. In addition, the property owners in the River Heights Number Six subdivision do not have a view easement on the subject property. The site plan shows that the sight line is not fully encumbered by the structures and that some views towards the Boise River and the Barber Pool Reserve are still preserved. The Barber Valley Neighborhood Association state that they have no objections and are excited to see development being proposed on the property. In their letter, they state that they strongly encourage for the board to place a requirement on the applicant to install irrigate and maintain street trees along the Warm Springs Avenue frontage with a similar offset in space that matches the street trees recently planted at the East Valley subdivision. And here is a Google kind of street view photo, and this is the Eagle Valley subdivisions on both sides of Warm Springs Avenue. And this is kind of the street trees and landscaping along that section of Warm Springs that goes through the East Valley subdivision. None of the agencies have raised any objections to the project. The Boise Public Works Department did state that Boise sanitary sewer is not available to the property. The Central District Health Department has approved of the septic permit for the property. Staff finds that this application complies with the Boise Conference of Plan as adopted by Ada County and the Ada County Code, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Go ahead.
Just clarification. So my understanding of what you said, there is sewer available, but the city of Boise doesn't allow them to hook up to it? Is that what you're saying?
That is my understanding. And the applicant property may be able to provide a little bit more insight into that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Brent.
Hello?
Good evening.
Give us your name and address for the record. You're the applicant.
Yes, you both are.
David and Courtney?
Everado and Courtney.
Everado, yeah. Santillan.
Okay, go ahead.
And our address is 539 East Barber Station Way.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a couple of comments that I heard questions just a second ago about the sewer. This was our, hooking up initially when we came in for our variance, we thought, oh yeah, no big deal, we'll hook up to city sewer. And it became more complicated than we realized. So city sewer is not available on this lot. It is available across the street. At the time, we were told we could annex, you know, you could look into annexation, but the city is not pursuing any annexations at this time. And I did have, I don't have it in front of me because it's somewhere in this piece of stack of papers, but the new House bill that makes it actually quite difficult for cities to annex, I think it just passed last year. And so we then had to pivot and did the sewer instead, or, sorry, the septic instead. And so we already do have our septic permit, as Brent mentioned. And then I know that one of the comments from one of the neighbors in our neighborhood meeting and in written testimony was about the perception of septics being worse than sewers, but actually sewers are worse for the environment than septics are. And septics provide, you know, they nurture the ground and the trees and everything that's there. So I have that written as well in my research on septic systems. So we had to come back here because that previous language was in the previous variance. And so it was a hangup. So we had to come back through this process again.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
Question regarding the comment on the trees on Warm Springs. Are you, what's your reaction to that?
So I did reach out to Ada County, and we do intend to put trees in the mound. It's on the site plan that Brent had up there. So I did reach out to ACHD. Now, so you can kind of see our topography there, our topography there. And so I did say we would plant trees there. BBNA's request is that we are in the, like, the, not the roadway, but the right of way, I guess, of Warm Springs. And my only comment to that is we don't have the same level of funding that a development does. We would love to match East Valley, but with sidewalks and beautiful green grass and all that stuff, but we don't have that level of funding. But we fully do intend to plant trees, and I did communicate that back to BBNA that we plan to, we do plan to put trees there. And we are happy to do the type two trees, I think they requested, type two, type three trees, that we would, we're also already planning to do that, just not in the right of way of Warm Springs.
And the picture you see here that Brent showed is the both sides are subdivisions. It's not just residential.
Oh, the example picture he showed along Warm Springs, yeah. Those were both subdivisions, yeah.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, David.
I am David Cotner. I live at 10687 West Dason Court in Boise. I'm here, some people that live across the street are my friends, and they wanted me to come. I just had more questions on... I would hope that you would put some restrictions so that if you do give them a variance, that they don't not develop the property and then they just sell it? And then those variances stay with the property instead of staying with the owners? I don't think you want to grant variances and then let them sell the property and then somebody else comes in and changes the whole dynamics. That's all I have.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm neutral.
Any, any questions?
Well, Mr. Chair, it's kind of for staff, but I, I don't think, that's not really how variances work. They don't follow the person, they follow the, they stay with the property once it's sold, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Davidson, you are correct. They, did you run with the land.
And, but if somebody, if, if they did end up selling and somebody bought it along with the variances, they can't make any, they can't put anything new there, they'd have to come back for their own variance.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, they would have to comply with the approval that you grant. They would have to comply with the, the allowed setback reductions to site plan, that type of thing, that they would still essentially conform to what you're proving tonight or considering tonight.
Does that sort of, sort of answer your question, sir?
Um, it, it, it doesn't, and it doesn't. What I'm saying is if they don't, if they, if you give them the variances and then they decide that they're not going to build, I think you should put restrictions that if they decide they're not going to build and they don't build anything and then they sell the property, but...
Okay, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that particular scenario, but I'll just bounce that back to staff. If you grant a variance and they don't do it and they sell the property, is the new owner entitled to that variance?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I'll respond to that real quick. So that, maybe to address Mr. Cotner's concern, you can be more specific with the variance approval to say, we allow these encroachments into this setback, and that would sort of tie this site plan to the variance approval. Or you can say carte blanche, this is a five-foot setback along the side property line, and anything you want to build there, as long as it's five feet, you're fine. So the board could be more specific to say, we're approving this variance, but it's specific to the, the plan that was presented this today versus just a, across-the-board, five feet everywhere. So that's a response to the earlier question. To the second one, a variance doesn't have a, an expiration, and it runs with the land, it doesn't run with the property owner. It would be a unique approval to tie it to a property owner, and I, I wouldn't recommend it because it just kind of violates how we normally do variances. But, but again, you can't be more specific in the variance approval to say, anybody who builds on the site is going to be subject to the allowed encroachments seen on the associated site plan, but not just build everywhere, so.
I, I think what you have to be careful is this is an RP zone designation, and you don't want people buying land that are designated RP for pennies on a dollar and then coming in and asking for variances. And then with no, telling the commission that they have intentions to build and then they don't, and they bought it for pennies on the dollar, and now they're selling it for thousands of dollars on the dollar. Because then what you do is you just have developers coming in and buying RP zone designated land with really no intention to do anything on it, but to sell it for property. So I think you have, that's where my concern is, you have to be careful.
I don't know any response to that one.
Any more questions?
No.
Okay, any other questions? No, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this project? Are there any documents needed to be added to the file, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my presentation will be exhibit number 32.
Okay. Okay, I will then close the public hearing on application 2024-0238A-V.
Do you want to give the applicant a little rebuttal?
Yeah, if you want to rebut.
No.
No, they're fine. Okay, if you have a chance to rebut, we'll close the public hearing.
And then I just, if you have any issues, questions, legal questions about what you want to do with the variances, tied to whatever, you can unstable this, and I can give you some legal analysis if you have any questions.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing on application 2024-02388VAC. Everados and Delian. Okay, the application being closed. Anybody want to, I'll accept the motion. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'm inclined to support this based on what's already been presented, that all three conditions have been complied with and that this is, I, I understand the gentleman's concern about, but we don't have the ability to put, I don't consider we have the ability to put restrictions on the individual, on the, the way it was requested, I'll put it that way.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm inclined to support as well. However, just based on what staff said, I'm just wondering about inserting a simple condition that they must stick to the plan as submitted, which I don't think we would need to take.
Well, that's implied, is it not?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, be more specific with the variance approval, and I'm trying not to add to the record. It comes down to how you make the decision.
Right. All right, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be, we approve project number 2024-0238V-A-C, based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the discussion we've had tonight.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that with, with the understanding we're approving the variance as written specifically.
Okay, you've heard the...
I have a condition of approval then that they have variances.
We're not adding any condition of approval, that wasn't the motion. Okay. You've heard the motion, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I will then open the public hearing on application 2024-01215ZCDASPR, Calkins Creek subdivision. And we'll have Leon give us the staff report.
I'm going to have to excuse myself. Go ahead, I'll be right back.
All right, Chairman Commissioners, I can present if you're ready. Okay. The item for you is a zone change development agreement, a preliminary plot, and a private road. The applicant is Andrew Newell from Lane A. Warmer Civil Engineering. Located or pictured here is the subject property, it's 8.42 acres, located at the southwest corner of Victory and Wrestler Place. It's currently zoned RUT, rural urban transition. They are requesting to go to the estate residential or R1 district. As you can see, it's surrounded by rural residents to the north, east, south, and west. The proposal is a seven-lot subdivision, five of which would be buildable lots for new single-family homes. There'd be a lot for the private road located roughly in the center of the development, and then a small lot for the Calkins Creek lateral that impacts the southwest corner. Buildable lots would range from 1.2 to 1.8 acres in size, which does comply with the R1 standards. Pictured here is a future land map. This is designated as low-density residential in Meridian's future land use map, which we've adopted. That does support R1 zoning in terms of the acreage size typically required or requested in that low-density residential land use designation. To the west, we have mixed-use neighborhood. To the north, we have medium-density residential. To the east, we have low-density residential. And to the south, we have more low-density residential, all within the Meridian land use map. The zoning, as mentioned before, is RUT. It's completely surrounded by RUT. We've had a lot of conversation about RUT tonight, but it is the typical zone provided to properties inside areas of city impact. This is inside Meridian's area of city impact. Terms of agency comments, nothing too exciting here. Our building official noted that they have no objections to the project. Obviously, permits will be required in the future. Our, our community and regional planning team noted that the project's in compliance with the Meridian Conference of Plan as we've adopted it, and I mentioned that earlier. Boise Project Board of Control noted the presence of the Calkins Creek lateral and provided some guidance as to how that needs to be handled, easements, landscaping, other things as it relates to that. The New York Canal noted that there is 7.42 acres of a water right associated with the property. City of Meridian had an interesting comment. They noted concern about this developing at this level at this time because it's not, you know, it's, it's not in their city limits, and that is kind of something that they were focused on. However, they thought with the inclusion of a landscape buffer along Victory that met some kind of subdivision standards, and we would work closely with ACHD on that because that's ultimately their right-of-way that would dictate what is allowed in that landscape buffer, they would be okay with it. And then they also asked that, uh-oh. There you go. They also asked that dry-line water and sewer be installed in the development so that when the homes that will be built here can connect, they will, they will connect. It should be noted that the utilities are in the, in the road now, there, Meridian's just not allowing people to connect until they annex. And then finally, they defer to ACHD on sidewalk design standards for, for the, the frontage on Victory, and I believe Wrestler as well, although I don't, can't recall if they required anything on Wrestler. But it is a, a condition of approval that comply with ACHD's comments. Central District Health noted that typical subdivisions, a land development application will be required, they'll do a fee-per-lot test holes and full engineering report. Our Ada County engineer requested some updates to the preliminary plat based on feedback from the county surveyor, just pretty typical stuff in terms of how they're detailing their plat. And they also had some guidance on well depth for the future lots, they would like them to be 250, they, they recommend they be 250 feet deep. And they, on the, the frontage of, or on the front of availability of water, they, they did note concerns about locating individual well and septic on properties of that size right now. Again, the 1.2 to 1.8 acres, site gets a little tight when you're trying to do those individual services on each property. I mentioned the highway district here. Well, I mentioned I didn't recall what they required, here's exactly what they required, I put it in my presentation. So they are going to improve Victory Road with 17 feet of additional paving, they want a three-foot wide gravel shoulder and a 10-foot wide multi-use pathway. They want to close the existing driveway onto Victory that serves the single-family home that's on-site now. They want some additional right-of-way dedicated on Victory Road. There are plans in the future to improve Victory Road. They want permanent right-of-way easement for any public sidewalks that are placed outside of the right-of-way that's dedicated, in the event that that's how that has to occur. Let's see, they also have to repair or replace any damaged roadways as a part of this. The new private road onto Wrestler Place, they've given some specific, specific guidance as to where it will be located and how it should be constructed. ACHD always approves the connecting point of private roads to public roads. And then some requirements regarding street naming and stop signs and so forth. Terms of public comments, there were three received. There was concern about how the proposed wells in this area would impact water for other existing residents, concern about septic also impacting the area, and that many septics on, on the size of a property. Concerns about Victory Road, just traffic on Victory Road, as well as the speed of traffic. Some requests made to have a speed limit lowered, that's unfortunately not an area you get to make any requirements, but ACHD could field that request. And ACHD did note that Victory Road can handle the traffic that would be generated by this development. There's a concern about an alignment of the proposed private road with an existing driveway to the, to the east of the site across Wrestler Place. You know, ACHD does identify where the ideal alignment is, and, and it, it does appear to align with pretty closely that existing driveway. Just general concerns about additional housing in the area, putting additional demands on public services, the fire department, sheriff, again, roadways and what ACHD does. And then some folks practicing small-scale agriculture in the area had concerns that new homeowners would, you know, complain about their activities and cause, cause a problem for them in terms of continuing operations. So in conclusion, or not in conclusion, we're not there yet, but project findings, staff did find that it complies with the Meridian Conference of Plan. We did not find that it complies with the zoning ordinance map amendment. And the number one reason for that is rezoning from the RUT to the R1, there's a specific section of code concerning urban public facilities that says if we're going to give that type of zoning to a development, it has to be connected, it should be, has to be connected to utilities, that's sewer and water primarily. And so from staff's perspective, this request doesn't meet that, and so that's why we, we don't believe it complies with zoning ordinance map amendment, and that's why we've recommended denial. We do believe it complies with the development agreement section of code. We don't believe it complies with the preliminary plat section of code, again, based on the fact that they can't meet the purpose statement of the, of the residential district and, and those lot sizes. We do find that it complies with the private road, and we found that it did not comply with Meridian Area of City Impact Agreement. And mainly, again, it all goes back to requesting R1 when you're not connecting to, to water and sewer, just, for staff, it's a bridge too far to, to say yes to that. It should be noted, as I mentioned, we are recommending denial, but our planning and zoning commission did recommend approval. And the reasoning behind that is, was detailed in the findings that you received, they, they thought it to be a nice fit with surrounding land uses, they liked the idea that this could preserve some larger lots in the event when the city does arrive. I think we kind of heard arguments towards that earlier tonight with other developments. And the dry-line water and sewer was important for the P&amp;Z's recommendation of approval as well. They thought that if the developer's willing to put that in now and connect when they can, then, you know, maybe we're kind of in the same place as to whether or not Meridian just gave it to them today. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, and thank you.
All right, any questions, first half? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. Were Meridian's requested conditions already incorporated into this?
Uh, yeah, Chairman Commissioners, we have a review letter from them, and so the dry-line water and sewer, I believe, if you do approve it, we put that as a condition of approval in the P&amp;Z's recommended findings. If you do opt to approve, we will ask to revise findings to reflect your decision here tonight, and we would make sure that condition was included, the dry-line water and sewer and the, the landscape buffer along Victory, so.
And when does Meridian think that they're going to be extending water out there?
Well, Chairman Commissioners, the utilities are in the ground, they're just not allowing people to connect. They're about, I believe, a half mile away, I'll let the applicant speak to more specifically how close they are. They're not, you know, they really aren't too far away from city limits at this point, but there are several properties, I believe to the east or north of them, that, you know, you can't control when somebody else annexes, and you can't really request annexation until you're adjacent to city limits, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comment, but no questions.
Okay, well, the city of Meridian's report says sewer is approximately 1,375 feet from the subject property, is that correct?
Chairman Commissioners, I, I apologize, I think their water is in Victory and not their sewer yet, so there was a, there was confusion there. They, they noted presence of utilities in the adjacent roadways, and it must have been their water system and not their sewer system, so.
Water system is there, and the sewer is, according to them, it's at 1,375 feet from the property.
Right, so yeah, we're about roughly a quarter mile away from, from those utilities being present, which would allow for the connection. And, you know, we anticipate Meridian to extend those utilities as they continue to annex west.
They ask, no, they're asking to put in dry lines, what does that actually mean?
And the applicant, who is an engineer, I believe, can speak to that better than me, but it's basically putting in the ground the service connections that would allow for the homes being built on-site to connect when the utilities are present. And so they're just going to put those in, and they won't be used until they can connect to what's available.
Okay, all right, any other questions? All right, thank you. The applicant here. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Dylan Ludlow, 2695 West Victory Road in Meridian. I'm with the company that's looking to develop the property. First of all, I wanted to express appreciation to Leon and to county staff for all of their help and their patience with us through this process, and then thank you too, to you Commissioners for taking your time out of your evening here so we can present to you. Project's pretty straightforward, like staff said, just, you know, five lots, smallest ones, little over an acre, biggest one's about 1.88 acres, not quite two acres. We feel that this is a good transition if you look at the surrounding neighborhood, both to the north of us and then also to the east and south of us. There's a little bit larger lots, about five acres, or ranging up to about five acres, and we feel that as development continues to fill in in the neighborhood, this, this project is going to serve as kind of a nice little transition piece there. As far as water and sewer is concerned, at least to this point, doesn't seem to have, no one really seems to have any concerns over the water. I know some neighbors expressed concerns, but as far as, you know, relevant agencies, there's plenty of water rights there. As far as sewer is concerned, our original plan was to do well on septic on this property here. this property here. We've done nutrient path, we've had a nutrient pathogen study, or MP study conducted, and that study reflected or showed that sewer, or five individual septic systems is supported on this site here. To speak to a little bit about what, what staff was referencing as far as dry utilities, so we were originally going through and just trying to do well and septic on this site. We talked to the City of Meridian. They will not allow us to annex at this time because we do not, we're not adjacent to city limits right now. There's a couple of properties in between our property and where the city limits are. And so they won't allow us to annex on an island, essentially. With that, they won't allow us to tie into city water and city sewer as well. The city water line does run across or run in front of our property there along Victory. The sewer, as staff referenced, that's to the east of us, I believe, is where the closest connecting point would be. And as far as the city is concerned, we've asked when they think we could possibly tie in, and the, the answer that we got is that they don't know either. It's dependent and contingent upon what goes on in the neighborhood, and depends on when our neighbors choose to annex. And, you know, the city can't force annexation, and we obviously don't have any control over what our neighbor does with their property. We, I'm trying to think of, oh, additionally, so another concern that was brought up, neighbors were, had expressed concern over increased traffic as well. Right now, when you drive out to the property, in order to access it, the main driveway is right off of Victory Road. So if I want to turn onto the property, I have to slow down signal and then either make a right turn off of Victory or slow down and cross, cross the road making the left from Victory onto the property. This, this development's going to actually take some of that dangerous slowdown traffic off of Victory and put it onto Calkins, Calkins Creek Road there, right through the middle of the subdivision. As far as the location of the road, we worked with ACHD in figuring out where they wanted us to enter the property and how they wanted that road designed. We had originally explored the option of having our road turn off of Victory, and ACHD didn't like that. They wanted us to come in off of Rustler. And so that's why we have it set up the way that we do it currently. Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty straightforward on, on our end here. We obviously asked for your approval here, and with that, I'll yield my time and just stand for questions.
Go ahead. You have a question?
Yes. Thank you for, I, mine's a water question.
Sure.
You, you are in the-
Sorry, I'm sorry, I don't have any cardboard here with me to illustrate anything.
It's all right.
Don't have any cards, cardboard?
I don't have the card, sorry.
You're the property there, as you said, on Victory, correct? Your, your entrance is on Victory. You, you have a well of your own there?
Yeah.
So, one of the, one of the-
Also irrigation rights to that property as well.
Okay, so for all of this property? That was one of my questions as well. So, the, the anticipation is, is that you're going to have, the wells that you drill are going to provide all the water, though. You're not going to have irrigation water going to any-
That's correct.
Any of, so the water rights will be maintained by you for the property?
Yeah, correct. We'll, we'll form, we'll have it included with the HOA agreement when that's all established. But yeah, that's correct.
And now, you're aware of the, the recommendation that you tested for arsenic and uranium? Has your well been tested for that? Because that's an area where that's-
I, I know it was, because when we, when we purchased the property earlier this year, we had gone through and done all the inspections there. And so, the short answer to your question is yes, within the last 12 months, it's, it's been tested. And everything's come back clean, and we can do additional testing if that's, if that's required.
Another question?
Go ahead.
So, the anticipation is, once, because you're putting in the lines to connect to the city, Meridian City, that those wells would then be, you don't be using the wells for a number of years, then they would be-
Yeah, that, yeah, so we would be using the wells until, I, I don't know, we don't know when, right? We don't know when the annexation would happen, or when we would be able to tie into the city utilities. So they would, yeah, we would be using the wells up until that point.
The anticipation is, of course, it's private property, and they could keep the wells if they wanted, or-
Exactly. Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, sir. Okay. If anyone else wishes to testify on this project? Okay. Give us your name and your address. You didn't.
I did sign up to testify. My name is Tina Dean.
Oh, Tina, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, you did.
I also sent in a letter. I live in the property directly to the east, and I have a, I do have a few concerns. The wells and the septic on the one acres are a concern to me because some of our neighbors in the surrounding area, we've seen their wells dry up over the last few years. So, that's a concern. The septic on those smaller lots with the wells, and now, I, I don't really understand what happens when they annex into the city and those wells get capped, if that positively or negatively impacts the surrounding water rights and, and water level. I, I'm also concerned about, I know that they have irrigation rights to that property, but the previous owner had difficulty getting it processed across this whole property. So, I was, I still don't understand, after the developer testified, if they're using well water to irrigate each of their 1.2 or 1.8 acre home sites, or if that will be irrigation water. My primary concern, because of where I live, is where the street is aligning to this, that stretch of black right there is our private asphalt. I do not want that street aligning with my private driveway to our pasture area. I'm not sure if it was the Commissioners here or ACHD that requested that street to be moved, but my understanding is it originally was farther to the north on the property, and the developer moved it at the request of some agency or government official who asked for that. And then they also asked for that private street to be stubbed with a west on it. But again, this is a private access. I, I don't want people making a wrong turn down my driveway where we have utilities stubbed at the entrance to Rustler there, and then having to back up. I just don't, I just don't want them there. I am glad somebody's moving in to that property. We were sad to see the previous owners go, and it's definitely more difficult to take care of the surrounding properties when nobody's there taking care of the land. So, it's not that we don't want it to be developed. And the last, another comment is that the developer said there, there will not be increased traffic on Victory, but there will. It will just also increase traffic in front of these two properties on Rustler. You still have to slow down on Victory to turn in there. So any help or requests we can get to ACHD to help slow that speed limit, which is currently 50 miles per hour, down to a reasonable amount would be appreciated. And I'm just curious, I don't know if anyone has the answer, but when city services finally come over, will each house individually choose to annex, or will the entire subdivision be annexed? And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, your concerns about the wells, help me understand, I mean, how that affects you, whether their wells are deep enough or, or what?
Because I have a well. When, would wells have been going into the area? If you have an older well that's not been drilled this deep, our neighbors have been, their wells have been drying up, or they've been getting sand in their pumps when they're, you know, hitting the top of that water table. So my understanding is the more wells that go in the area, the more difficult it is for those older wells to siphon the water.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Go ahead.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
So, how deep is your well then?
200.
200 feet.
200. And you haven't had any-
There are older home sites around us. It's not, I'm also concerned for the neighbors who have been there, you know, for a long time, that might not have the money to re-drill or replace their well.
And you have, you have any problems with your well?
I have not had problems with my well, no.
And this condition here is for 250-foot well, wells on these?
Okay.
So it would be the level of yours, not those shallower wells?
Okay.
That's my understanding, but the-
Okay.
The developer could clarify that.
That makes me feel better.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it, Tina. Goodbye. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else in this who wishes to testify?
Sign up.
Could you, could you give your name?
My name's Richard McGurdio. I live at 6725 South Starstruck Boise. I own the farm kitty-corner to this piece. It'd be to the north and to the west. I'm not against your project, but what I worry about is the wells. I have a supplementary well, irrigation well, and I have a, a domestic well. And if they dry up that ground and not use the surface rights and try to pump all that water, it's going to lower that. It's going to lower our water table. And you have five wells going in there. I wish they could find a way to at least hook to city water. The sewer line, my understanding is in 10-mile. I think there's a line back to the east also. Like I said, I'm not against it. I'm just, I, I think the staff got it right, though, as far as denial. So, that's, that's just my comments. That, my address there on that farm is 3030 West Victory. There's 40 acres there.
All right. Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, my, my question, so you have had, how deep is your well, and have you had problems with your well?
We've had a little bit of trouble because it is a shallow well. That's the, we call that the old smart farm. And we've had trouble there.
So, excuse me. So it's 100 feet? It's not-
No, I don't know exactly for sure, Commissioner Daly. I don't know exactly what it is. But, you know, there is surface water rights on there, and they have, they have made, and I'm also a director on the New York Irrigation District. And normally, when we have, this one wouldn't work very good because it's so small, we, we require them to put pressurized systems in. But it doesn't work where it's small like this. So, that, you know, all that water that, you know, we farm in that area, and the canals, they, they feed the aquifer, just like you guys were talking earlier. So, you know, the wells is the only thing I'm concerned about. And I'm, I'm not crazy about having five septic tanks upstream from me. So.
And you're, you have any other questions?
What's that?
Well, you're on the board of the New York-
Yes, I'm a director on the New York Irrigation Board.
Okay, so don't line that canal there, then.
Well, I don't think the Calkins, that is the Calkins lateral that runs through there. That, that will never be lined. It's not big enough to-
Well, that's great, because if you don't line the canal, the-
Well, we are lining, we are lining in New York. So, so.
I know that. And it's causing groundwater to-
Right, right. But remember, Commissioners, we live in a desert. I don't know if anybody remembers that.
Oh, yeah, this is desert.
It's a desert. And without that water-
Water's-
Coming, you know, and going down, we got nothing. So.
All right, we're working on water.
I think your staff got it right.
Yeah.
I really do. So.
Okay, any other questions for?
Do you have any suggestions on conditions about how to-
Boy, I don't know. That's a tough one, because they really, if they could at least get the city water, because it's right there, it's right in front of there, it's right down Victory, but-
Well, it sounds like it's just going to be a waiting game to wait for the city to catch up to it.
And, and I'm not crazy about the sewer either. I mean, nobody wants a se, five septic tanks above you, you know? So, that, that's my only concern. I, the project's great, it's just the water and the sewer. So.
Drilling their well deeper, that doesn't help anything, does it? Because it's still hitting the same aquifer?
Not necessarily. There, there's basically three aquifers.
There's three aquifers.
It's just too bad you guys can't work out some kind of deal with the city, because it's right there. They put it in. The water line, I mean, the city water is right there. And, you know, but that's the City of Meridian. We've been dealing with the City of Boise, and that's a whole nother story, but, yeah.
Yeah, I know. You got a big one there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishes to testify on this project? All right, nope. So is there any documents need to be added to the record?
Chairman, my presentation will be an exhibit to the record, and then we'll have the applicant rebut anything that was heard during public testimony, so.
Okay. Before we close the record, or is there any questions from staff before we close the record?
Rebuttal.
Yes, you get a rebuttal, by the way.
I go now.
Yeah, come on up. You get five minutes. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, first thing was, a neighbor brought up a concern about the, the road. Yeah, we, originally, when we had laid out just a draft plat, we had the entrance to the property a little bit further north, still coming off of Rustler. ACHD didn't like that. And so the reason that we have the road where it is, and the design that we have is because of ACHD's guidelines and requirements. As far as water and sewer is concerned, I think everyone's preaching to the choir. I think it makes a lot of sense if we could tie into city utilities right there. We would love to do that. City of Meridian just simply won't allow it, and they, we don't have any kind of timeframe there. As far as the concern about septic takes in particular, previously I had mentioned the nutrient pathogen study, or MP study, that we had conducted, and that supported the individual wells and septic systems there for, for those lots. I actually had, if that's okay, I wanted to have our engineer explain, because I'm not an engineer, but have our engineer explain kind of our plan with our irrigation surface rights here, so.
Good evening. Andrew Newell with Walmart Engineering, 4355 West Emerald Street. Yes, this property does have irrigation water to it. That information was provided by the Irrigation District. We will be utilizing that surface water for the PI system. So hopefully that alleviates any kind of extra pressure on, on the, the wells that would be, that would be drilled. So, yes, we will be utilizing that, that irrigation water.
So you will have pressurized irrigation for the, for the, for the lots?
Yes.
Well, hey, that clears up quite a bit, and that takes a lot of water pressure away from the, from the well, certainly. All right, any other questions?
Just a question, I don't know if it's for either one of you, but Department of Water Resources, has, have they, did they comment on this and for staff as well?
Chairman Commissioners, I personally did not receive anything from IDWR on this one.
Okay. And did, because you heard from the previous one, they actually got water rights to the wells. So you didn't do any of that?
I don't believe, I don't believe yet.
We, sorry, we've just had preliminary conversations, and so far in those preliminary conversations, they haven't expressed any concerns. They've indicated that there's certain things that we'll need to fill out and officially submit with them, but as far as preliminary conversations go, they don't think there's any issues there.
My question was, are you going to ask for a water right for the wells? Because you can do that with Department of Water Resources.
Oh.
And, and then that preserves the right to the well, the water in the well, yes?
Then, yeah, we, yeah, we would officially need to do that, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Any other rebuttals or anything?
No, I don't have anything. Do you have any other questions for, for me?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So then, do we have any other documents need to be added to the record?
Uh, no, Chairman, everything's been added.
Okay. Well, with that, then I will close the public record, or public hearing on application 2024-01215-ZCDASPR, Calkins Creek Subdivision. Okay, that's before us. I don't know if we're going to approve this or not, but I would recommend that if we do, that we put as a condition of approval the, the pressurized irrigation system, because I don't think that's in the plat, right, in the plans right now, is it?
Chairman Commissioners, there's no specific condition related to pressurized irrigation, so you wouldn't want to add something.
Yeah, I would ask that we do, that we, again, I don't know if we're going to approve that, but I certainly would ask that that be, that part of the, of the conditions of approval. And any other, we, we could ask that they get, that they get the, the Department of Water Resources as well.
And we could send a letter to City of Meridian, asking that they hook them up, at least so they know.
I'm sure they'll just take that under advisement.
That's all we can ask.
I know. Okay. Any other, anything else before we?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with what you just said, and I was going to make the same statement. The pressurized, it relieves my mind as well.
All right. Well, that's- All right, well, then let's make a motion, and we'll have to table this, correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Yeah, we would recommend if you do want to vote to approve, that you table to the open business meeting on December thirty-first to give Leon some time to draft up some, some findings and conditions for you.
Okay. So the motion would be to approve subject to new conditions that would be added on the thirty-first. Correct? All right, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to table application number two oh two four zero one two one five dash Z C dash D A dash S dash P R, Caukens Creek Subdivision. Table two.
Thirty-first.
December? December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, with instructions to staff to issue revised findings of fact, approving the application with the addition of a condition to require pressurized irrigation.
Two conditions. Pressurized irrigation and the Department of Water Resources permit.
And that the Department of Water Resources issue a permit.
Well, they have to get the permit.
This was to approve and then table, correct?
Yeah, to table with instructions to approve with the two additional conditions.
Any questions of staff? Yeah.
Thirty-first?
Thirty-first, yes. I understand what you want, and I, I can write that, so, yeah.
Okay, we got that. All right, so it's clear.
And send a letter to Meridian. I'm putting it in.
We can always do that. All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second to the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have one more item on the agenda. It is, I guess we need to, we need, it's an ordinance, so we need to open a public hearing on the ordinances listed on the agenda. Go ahead, and we'll hear staff report.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Commissioners. So the item before you will be a new title to Ada County Code based on legislation passed by the state of Idaho during the last session to create agriculture protection areas. We are the applicant, Ada County. We'll work closely with our legal team to figure out what that new legislation was asking us to do and to prepare an ordinance for you. So I'll, I'll walk you through the ordinance. It's a lot of verbatim copy and paste from the actual ordinance document. I'll try not to read word by word. And then I'll stand for any questions that you have at the end of the night. So the purpose of the, of the new ordinance comes from the language associated with, with the new legislation, and I'll read it into the record. The purpose of the agricultural protection area ordinance is to provide an opportunity to protect and enhance the economic and cultural benefits that working lands, including farms, ranches, and forests, provide to Idahoans by promoting proactive planning tools for working landowners and governing bodies to maintain and enhance the economic value of working lands without impacting the property of those that elect not to participate in this opportunity. So the applicability section of the ordinance, this would apply to any property. Well, to make this request of you to establish one of these, a property would need to be a minimum of five acres in size, and it has been an active agricultural or forest production for a minimum of three consecutive years, consistent with Idaho provisions per state code regarding what active production means. And so there's a specific Idaho code reference to point to within the ordinance itself. Whoops, that's a duplicate slide, sorry. The process for establishing one of these would be to submit a completed application form. Development Services will be the recipient of those, and we'll, we'll process these requests. We'll need a description of the property to be included in the, I'm going to start saying APA, just to make this easier for everybody. We'll need a detailed letter describing the property, its uses, and explaining how the proposal complies with our required findings, which I'll get to on a later slide. We'll need evidence demonstrating that the active agricultural production has been an active agricultural production for the last three years. And then there will be an application fee and timeline. We are still working to establish that. That'll be a forthcoming resolution for the board to consider the, the actual fee. The timeline itself is pretty explicit within the ordinance, which is a, a tight one that we had to spend some time figuring out. How, so interestingly enough, the legislation requires that action be taken on these requests within sixty days, and that the APA commission make a recommendation to you within that timeframe. Buried in the legislation is also a requirement that planning maps be updated. And the only way you update a planning map per our code is to go through a zoning ordinance amendment, which doesn't ever really happen in sixty days. That would be the fastest one we've ever processed, if that were possible. So we had to create, and I'll get to this in a later slide again, sorry to keep kicking the can down the road, but we're creating a subsequent section of Title Eight to create an overlay zoning district that allows us to achieve the updates of the planning maps. But we've, we think we've threaded the needle on how to get this done in sixty days. This would be subject to a public hearing, not necessarily a planning, a public hearing of this nature. It could be subject to an OBM meeting where you would field this request, consider it, and make your decision. You may approve or deny the application, and then ultimately these would be recorded with the county recorder just to, to hold record of that for the timeframe required by the ordinance, which is a minimum of twenty years unless a reduction is granted by the board. So the required findings, you know, these were buried in, again, not buried, I don't want to keep saying buried. We unpacked these from the legislation to figure out what they were trying to get
Inserted, is that?
Yes, yeah. So we took our time to try to distill what it is they wanted. We also looked at some best practices. The Association of Counties for Idaho had, had some information that they shared. We spent a lot of time actually talking to other county directors. There's a pretty robust chat around this. Funny enough, we didn't get any comments from the public or anybody else, but it was a lot of county planning staff speaking to each other, like, how are we going to do this? What does this look like? I will commend us. I think we might be one of the few counties that actually is going to get this online in time, providing things go well. Per the legislation, this has to be in place by the beginning of the year. So we, we worked hard to meet that timeline, and here are the findings that we considered. So as I mentioned earlier, the applicability section, we turned into a finding, has to be a minimum of five acres. The second applicability finding, or set, or requirement, we made a finding as well, that it had to be an active production for three years how that's defined in state code. Here's where we started getting to what some of ACI and other groups mentioned. The subject property possesses a designation on the adopted future land use map supportive of agricultural or forest land. It's a little noisy out there in the All right, thank you. Let's see. So designated the subject property as an agricultural protection area shall not impede the expansion of an existing area of city impact. So we want to consider those pre-existing areas of city impact when making these approvals. Let's see, so. We can pause if we want to provide some backup to our legal staff there. Let's see. Designating an APA shall not conflict with existing city annexation or development plans or agreements. It shall not conflict with planned transportation corridors or future public rights of way. Shall not conflict with planned export, airport expansion or development. And shall not conflict with planned development with existing entitlements. Now, these are the findings that this board would make in ultimately saying yes. And so we can have these high-level things. You will get the nuanced details of what's actually occurring in the area, and you'll need to make the consideration of that when saying yes or no to, to the APAs. Because as you're aware, some plans are a little more detailed than others in terms of what a city plans to do in an area. So you'll just have to work with staff to, to figure out what's actually going on before saying yes or no. In terms of another part of the ordinance, we will establish an APA commission. So this will be a new group of individuals appointed by the board to review these and make that recommendation within sixty days as required by the legislation. I didn't go into great detail on this section. It's pretty typical stuff. The, the bylaws will include the duties of those officers. It'll include, or sorry, this section identifies the duties, which is to review these and make a recommendation. It also includes information on bylaws, and bylaws are really just how are you going to conduct business? How often? How do we come to decisions? That sort of thing. And there's also a section about how members of the commission can be disqualified if there's issues in terms of constant conflicts of interest or other, other things like that. So again, all within the ordinance document shared with you, but I didn't want to copy and paste that much language into a, a presentation tonight. As I mentioned before, we did not receive any comments from the agents, from agencies of the public. We've had, again, a lot of good statewide conversations with planning directors. I know that, you know, our own commission has talked to us about this, this legislation and what we're planning to do with it. So it does look like we might have some members of the public that want to speak to it tonight, and so that's great. Looking forward to hearing that. And again, this is a, you know, as all ordinances, it's a living thing. So if we launch this and decide we've got to make some refinements, it's always at the discretion of this board to go back and, and do that. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the Title XI that we prepared for you tonight. Your next steps, as I mentioned earlier, will be to appoint that APA commission to start fielding any requests that we get. And then ultimately, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have a Title Eight amendment to create an overlay zoning district to achieve the other part of the state legislation, which is to update our planning maps to reflect, this is now an APA. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Well, thanks, Mr. Chair. So in trying to understand what exactly this law does, you know, based on the previous conversations we've had, it, it seems almost a little toothless. And, you know, it makes me wonder if, when it was first drafted, there was maybe some teeth in it, and then as it went through the legislative process, it got defanged. I, I don't know. I didn't follow the legislative history. But from, from our previous discussions, it sounds like this is something that is to some degree voluntary, and it could really only be used on property you own. And it's not something that could be enforced on property you don't own. So, you know, for instance, if another solar farm proposal comes up, this doesn't sound like something that you could say. You're not allowed to develop that because it's an agricultural protection area. It has to be the landowner designating it. And so it's kind of a voluntary thing, which, you know, what the overall impact of this is going to be, I don't know how significant it is. But do you want to talk a little bit about the powers conveyed here?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner Davidson, yes, it is, it's, it's the property owner's in the driver's seat to establish one of these. Your neighbor can't establish this on your property and, you know, reduce your property rights or development rights. So it is something that would be self-imposed. And there are specific requirements. It's a minimum of twenty years. A property owner could come to the commissioners after five or ten years and request to reduce that timeframe, reduce the area associated, or just terminate it altogether. But they would have to demonstrate hardship. And there's a definition within our code about hardship. It's pretty general. I think a lot of things could be thrown in there, financial, other things like that. But yeah, it is very much self-imposed. And I, to your point about how this legislation came about, I think Richard may have tracked this one earlier on a bit more than I did. But I think there early on had been some ideas about incentives. I think ultimately those were removed, and so now it's really, it would be a large landowner in their lands in agricultural production. They want to see it stay that way for twenty years. And so they're voluntarily going to establish this and, and kind of put everybody on alert that this is, you can count on this for twenty years, basically. So, Richard, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you know, agree with what Leon said, what, what you've mentioned, Mr. or Commissioner Davidson. You know, early iterations of the state legislation did have, as Leon mentioned, specifically are focusing on tax incentives for, for folks to encourage them to, to enter into this designation. But ultimately, the final version didn't, didn't have any of those incentives left, so it's fully voluntary.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
And if somebody wanted to be appointed to be an APA commissioner, I'm assuming we're going to handle that like we do other volunteer boards and commissions, where we just entertain applications and the board would appoint, and then I'm assuming they would have their meetings here at the courthouse?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, exactly. We would run it like our HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, or you know, sort of like our Planning and Zoning Commission, maybe a little less authority than P and Z. But there are criteria within the bylaws that will basically identify who can qualify. It's not just anybody. You have to actually have kind of specific knowledge about agriculture and the industry to qualify. So again, all forthcoming and bylaws that we'll bring to you in a little bit. But yeah, you, you would appoint, they'd, they'd, you know, fill out an application through our portal, and you would field those as they come, and we'd fill out an APA commission, so.
Okay, any other questions? Do you have any questions? Nope, go ahead. Okay, we have some people who want to testify. Ted Vanerschaff.
Evening. Hello, again, Commissioners. Ted Vanerschaff, thirty-six, thirty-three, West Green Lane. I didn't come to testify for this tonight. I was here for the hearing earlier. But since I saw this was on the docket tonight, I thought I might as well throw my name down. I actually, I'll put my other hat on in a minute. I actually serve on the Idaho Dairy Association. This legislation came before us two years ago or so, and we were in favor of it. You know, as, as we kind of, going back to the hearings tonight, we talked about a lot of different land use issues, conflicts with neighbors. All, all water, you know, we talked about dairies, we talked about, you know, traffic. And we talked about nuisance complaints and all of those. You know, this is essentially a, we'll call it a first start, law, legislation that's now hopefully turning into county ordinance. You're right, the teeth have been taken out of it. At one time, they talked about tax incentives, property taxes and otherwise. You know, there was, there was a lot of discussion about lengths of this term. Long story short, the purpose of this is to try to give ag some protections. Right now, we feel like we're dying by a thousand cuts. And a lot of our, our culture, our, 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 our character issues that we're talking about with our neighborhoods and where our dairies are stem around some of the words we use, like agriculture, productive agriculture, prime farm ground, irrigated ag. And, you know, one of the things I see a lot is not all agriculture is the same agriculture. You know, we have people coming in wanting to put five acre lots in, and people from town might call that agriculture. But us that, us that actually grow feed and grow, you know, raise cattle and produce milk, we're farming on thousands of acres. And we don't look at five acres as productive. And in fact, those people that put on, move onto five acres or move onto even ten acres sometimes, you know, actually will complain about us. And so some of this, some of this ordinance and the, and the legislation that preceded it has to do with some of those conflicts. I guess my comments to you is I'm in favor of the bill. I realize it doesn't have a lot of teeth. But I'm in favor of it because it's a first start. You know, like what happened tonight when our earlier hearing, on my dairy farm, we had city impact zone change. All of a sudden, we were within the city impact zone. All of a sudden, my whole world changed. And my dairy farm ended up being able to be, basically have RUT put around it. I don't know if this helps or hurts that. I think it probably helps my dairy. I can protect myself if I have neighbors that move in that want to kind of put pressure on me to leave. At the same time, twenty years to sign up for that is hard. You know, it appears that we're always against development, us farmers. We're not. We're actually pro-development. We want it to be controlled and even, and we want to see it coming. What we have right now is a lot of hopscotch and a lot of kind of, you know, the, like, like just moving around subdivisions. The laws are changing, the regulations are changing. We're having a hard time trying to figure out if we're staying or going. This gives us a little bit of a ability to set our own destiny, at least on our place. As far as, you know, what everybody else is doing, you know, at least maybe it protects us from being sued or being, being harassed. So with that, I'll, I'll stand, so.
All right, any questions?
No, but I'll just echo your sentiment. I think you can look at it as a first step. And once the law is passed, it's easier to amend or strengthen than starting from scratch. So hopefully it's a move in the right direction.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Destin Ferdinand.
Commissioners, evening. I'd just like Ted there. I was just kind of curious, you know, what was going on. I kind of have more questions about, you know, everything about this. And I think even just listening to it's kind of helped me out a lot. I really don't have much more to say at this time.
All right, thank you. Dennis Ferdinand.
Favor.
Favor. Paul Rhodes. Paul Bodes. He's gone. Okay, well, that concludes the people who've signed up. Is there anyone else wishes to testify on? All right, come on up.
My name is Leslie Vanerschaff. You've heard from me before. My husband was just up here, thirty-six, thirty-three, West Green Lane. I wasn't planning on testifying. I just was wanting to listen and see what this was about, since we're in agriculture and it could affect us. The one thing that I'm curious about, or maybe just want to comment about, as I sit there and listen, and you're right, there's not a lot of teeth in this, and it seems like it's an opt-in kind of a thing. I can see as I age and I want to maybe establish a trust or pass this piece of ground on to my children, and I want to make sure that they keep it in, in agriculture, that this would be a mechanism that I could use. I'm a little concerned about the hardships that they could use maybe to wiggle out of it. I don't know if that's set by you guys or by legislation, but I do think we want to honor the request of the original to honor the request of the original landowner and what they were trying to achieve and make sure that those hardships aren't easily obtained. And that's all I have to say. Have any questions for me?
Okay, any questions?
Well, the staff wanted to address that.
Oh, yeah, Chairman Commissioners, one thing I will say is that the, the definite, definition of hardship per the state law is what we used in our, uh, definition as well. Um, and yeah, we, we didn't, uh, make any modifications or add to that, but it is the state definitions.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, well, all right, well, thank you. So unless there is anyone else to wish to testify, uh, I think we'll, uh, close the public hearing on, uh, the ordinance, uh, is listed on the agenda. And, uh, so it's before us and I, I do believe this is a good start. It's a good start as we've, we've mentioned here. And I think it's, it's, it's like it is with a lot of things in the legislature, once they get started, they get objections and then they try to modify it and as they proceed down the, down the, uh, the lane to getting something done that they like to see done. And I think everyone, everyone likes, would like to see agriculture property preserved and, um, and I think the legislature as well will, uh, maybe work to, to improve upon this, but it's a good start. And so we're, uh, what's before us now is to approve this, uh, this ordinance. Is there any, uh, additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just as, uh, as you know and, and the community knows, I have a familiarity with agriculture and, uh, affinity to agriculture, so, and I was part of participating in the development of this legislation, so I, uh, it is actually what you, what's been described. Uh, the initial drafts were much more robust than this, but, uh, this is what we have and we're going to move forward from, from this. So with that, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, well, I'll accept the motion, having grown up on a farm and I'm probably one of the fewest, uh, uh, former potato growers in the room today. I, I milked a few cows, but, uh, I didn't like that, so I just started growing potatoes. All right, so I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move, and I, I, we didn't raise potatoes, but we did grow other things, so, uh, the, uh, even though it was in Idaho, uh, I move that we adopt Ada County, it, it's